The April 25th, 2024 Des Moines City Council meeting is now called to order. Councilmember Oxiger will now lead us in the pledge. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that all council members are present. Clerk, do we have any correspondence that has not been previously received by the council?
No, Mayor.
All right, thank you. It's now time for comments from the public. Oh, thank you very much. We ask that you keep your comments respectful. Please recognize that any person who is speaking in or acting in a way that's disruptive in the meeting will be removed. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and your city of residence. Let's see, is Debbie here tonight? Debbie Manidi? Oh, there she is. Good. I wanted to shake your hand, didn't get a chance to do this, so Debbie is our Commodore, and I'm allowing her to go first. And as a representative of an organization, Debbie, you've got five minutes to present your situation here.
All right. Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and residents, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight and update you on our club and our events. I'm from the Des Moines Yacht Club, right down here in the marina. At the beginning of boating season, there are three major events Des Moines Yacht Club participates in. The first of the season is the Tacoma Yacht Club Marine Daffodil Event. Our club won three prizes this year. We won our first award for being the most spirited. We had 20 people, 24 people, in the audience wearing matching shirts, funny glasses, and we had towels that we spun around, and we were loud. So, we set the bar high, and we ended up winning. Our next award was third place in the theme boat category of Time to Shine for Our Decorations. Our final and most prestigious award given to our theme boat was the Commodores Choice Perpetual Award, where our club's name will be placed on a plaque at the Tacoma Yacht Club to see for years to come. There will be pictures on the Tacoma Yacht Club website if you want to go and see what the boats look like. They, it was really pretty. Next, we will be attending the Seattle Yacht Club Opening Day of Boating on May 3rd and 4th, and participating in the opening day boat parade through the Mont Lake Cut. And the event is attended by local boating clubs, as well as clubs from Canada. I will be proud to represent our club and the city of Des Moines. It is sure to be a fun weekend. Now, let's talk about the third event and the reason for my visit here tonight: the South Sound Opening Day of Boating. In fact, I'm wearing my shirt that goes with our theme, which is Blue Hawaii this year. It's fast approaching on May 11th. We have a fun weekend of activities planned around the theme of Blue Hawaii for our members and our boating community. We are starting our weekend with 11 boats coming to the marina and visiting sites in our city. We are promoting the Walk and Run Event, the Art and Wine Walk, followed by our Opening Day of Boating Flag Ceremony, which is open to the public, and where the city proclamation will be read, as well as a blessing of the fleet will be performed. We look forward to your presence at our event. We continue to be a contributing part of this community and promote our city as a great boating destination wherever we go. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Debbie. So, I do have a question for you. We have, as you know, we're going to be doing a proclamation tonight for the opening day of boating season, so we have it here. And we'd love to offer you a little photo op and present it to you after it's read, but that's not going to be probably on the agenda for about another half hour. Would you like to stay for that?
Sure.
Okay, good. We'll catch you then, in about a half hour.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have Victoria Andrews.
Good evening, mayor, council, city manager, staff, and neighbors. I'm Victoria Andrews, resident of Des Moines. I want to say thank you tonight to three people for gamely rising to the challenge of filling the gap until the city can hire a full-time, experienced communication professional. Sense of, a track here. First, I want to thank city manager Tim George. Your weekly reports are fantastic and could easily replace our expensive and time-dated quarterly currents. Add photos or graphics, send an issue to the entire mailing list with a bigger banner, big banner question. This is going to replace the currents. Do you want to receive it mailed to your home or digitally? Call us. After that, you'll know how many is a reasonable number to print for distribution to those residents who insist on a paper version, as well as retirement communities, libraries, and other public places. Send the digitized final to everyone on the listserv, which you're working on now, right? This one move can save you thousands in printing and mailing, plus the sum that you're paying Mr. Phillips, who will still be just fine, collecting his ferry consulting fee, which I believe is $5,000 a month. Next, I want to thank councilmember J.C. Harris, who supplements Mr. George's excellent work by ferreting out other items of note that community members would like to know about, such as the food truck schedule and locations. And third, thank you, Mayor Buxton, for extracting what community focus groups told Conser was important to improve the city's communications with its constituents. Big props to you for scribing your own notes as you polled the council for additional items on the wish list. I think you all know that the $75,000 the city paid for Conser's lackluster, in my belief, work, was essentially money down the drain for too many reasons to list within my three minutes. But you culled the basics, and you have a blueprint now. And finally, a reminder, last July 5th, I was the only community member who showed up for coffee with then-Mayor Mahoney and Deputy Mayor Buxton. When I asked if Conser recommends hiring a communications director, will the city follow through? His response was something along the lines of, "We're spending a lot of money on them, and we'd be foolish not to." Since it looks like we won't have a full-time city manager till October, you three ad hoc communications people will still be working overtime to fill that gap for many months yet. But we are waiting for that job description and budget reallocation discussion to prove the city is serious about communicating better. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Victoria. Next up, Susan White.
Good evening, city council members and staff and city manager. I'm Susan White from Des Moines, Redondo specifically. Tonight, you are considering the passage of ordinance 24-20, which would increase our property taxes by approximately $3 million, with a levy lid lift to go on the August ballot. While this increase is framed as necessary for public safety, it's important to recognize that 1.7 million of the proposed increase is to fill a gap caused by the use of one-time Federal American Rescue Plan COVID-19 stimulus funding for ongoing operations. In adopting the 2024 budget, it was stated that the city and the Des Moines City Council had adopted strong, solvent, and sustainable budgets, resulting in healthy reserves exceeding recommended best practices of the Government Financial Officers Association. It's disheartening to see that this assurance has now been compromised. Now, the proposal is to shift this burden onto taxpayers by squeezing an additional 1.3 million out of their pockets, in addition to covering the ongoing costs covered by the American Rescue Plan. Have there been any serious conversations within the council about what led to this situation? Has there been an examination of alternative solutions before resorting to a tax increase? Before burdening taxpayers with more than 50% increase in our local property tax rate, has council thoroughly reviewed the 2024 budget for potential waste and inefficiencies? Additionally, it would be more prudent to have a new city manager onboard before placing this issue on the ballot. November would provide a more appropriate timeline for this decision. While we all value public safety, there needs to be a greater transparency reflection on how we reach this financial situation. At the very least, citizens would appreciate it if you would delay placing such a significant tax increase on the ballot until November. So, thank you for considering these concerns. Much appreciated.
Thank you, Susan. Next up, we have Kay Van.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for listening to what I'm about to share with the council member, the mayor, the city managers, and our public's communities. Where should I start? I want to thank the chief for coming out and talking to us. That was really appreciated. That same week, it got quiet, but not really. It's continuing, but I appreciate you coming down and talking to us and having your staff down there. I want to bring up a couple things: drugs. People are smoking down there everywhere. We have families down there, we have elderly down there, that they push them away. So, by the bathroom, there's benches right there. Families are gathered right there, and people will stand right by the bathroom and stop puffing. Now, weed, okay. Is there a possibility we can put a sign up that says, I don't know, I know we don't need any more signs, but I think this is health, safety of our community? Some type of sign that says no drugs allowed in the park, since that is dedicated as a park for about a year now? The nook on the end of Redondo Beach Drive and 280th, I brought this up a year ago, and the city painted no parking. People are still parking there. When I leave my shop around 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, I still see people parking there, playing the loud music, having the, like, neighborhood party, well, their own little party there. Couple of the neighbors suggested putting a big planter there, and that wasn't the city's thing to do, so they, you know, you paint it, that no parking or emergency area there, but that's not doing anything. So, I would like to ask the city to maybe come up with something else, other than that, if you don't want to put a planter there. Some of us would volunteer to take care of the plant, if needed, but it's part of the city, and, I don't, I'm just asking for help. So, all of us are asking for help. And another thing is, I've noticed people are not in our city, come down with their stuff that they don't want anymore, and start selling it there. Like, take for instance, the lounge chair, their crap pot, their tool, they just put it by the arch there, by the bathroom, and try to sell it to people. I did, I did got ahold of one, the officer, and shared with him, and he came and talked to them. But this is continuing, is not like a one-time thing. So, anything that, with the city can help with that, that would be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Is there anyone else who's attending tonight who expected to give public comment but did not know they needed to sign in in order to do that? Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have committee chair reports, and we had a couple committees meet this evening, so I'm going to hand the baton over to Chair Nutting to give us a briefing on both of those.
Thank you, Mayor. The first that I'll be briefing you on is the Municipal Facilities Committee Meeting. We met this afternoon and got an update on the Marina Steps. Design Team should be 60% plans tomorrow or Monday. Continued coordination with PSE for undergrounding the utilities on Cliff Avenue. In the next month or two, we'll have task assignments with design, and acceptance of a grant award coming to council to approve, and then out to bid late this year for the Marina Steps, Redondo Fishing Pier update, which staff will be presenting on this evening, and then the Marina CIP update, which we got an update on eight projects, four which are wrapping up, and then four which are in progress. And that's it for the Municipal Facilities Committee Meeting. Next was the Economic Development Committee Meeting, and we got an update on the comprehensive plan on three chapters, four chapters, that are being updated. Economic development for economic development chapter, and then for the north-central neighborhood, Marina District, and Pacific Ridge. And there'll be a larger discussion with council in August. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, we have the city manager to report. I'm going to hand the baton over to city manager Tim George.
Thanks, Mayor. I just have a couple items to report tonight. The first is, if you've been down to Redondo since yesterday, you will see that there's large signs up at both sides of the entrances to Redondo, letting people know that our speed enforcement cameras are going to be issuing citations starting May 27th. What that means is, starting tomorrow, we're entering our 30-day warning period. So, the cameras are going to be live starting tomorrow. They will be, we'll be doing some testing, but they'll also be capturing speeding incidents, and anyone that's caught will be sent a letter basically stating, as of May 27th, this would have been a $145 ticket. So, it's been a real labor of love over the last 18 months to get these, you know, from introducing them to the community and having that support for them, and then doing all the legislative work and the contracting, and then kind of the bureaucracy of getting the court's approval and all of that. So, it's been a long journey, but tomorrow we are starting the warning period. So, that's good news to report. Some more Redondo news. This is not as exciting. Item number seven on the consent agenda is a request to reject the single bid that we received for replacement of the Redondo fishing pier. And so, that's a pretty straightforward item, but I wanted to have our staff give a presentation on the background of that, why we're asking to reject the bid, and what are the next steps that we're looking at in order to make sure that this project happens. So, I'll ask Kai Lee to give a brief presentation.
Thanks, Tim. Good evening, mayors, deputy mayor, and council members. My name is Kai. I'm the current acting city engineer. And as you may aware, like Tim said, we have an item on the consent agenda today to request for council approval to reject the bid for the Redondo fishing pier and restroom replacement project. And I just want to present some additional information to assist with your decision on the items. So, some quick information on the background of the project. The existing fishing pier structure was originally built in 1980, and an engineering evaluation in 2019 concluded that some timber element of the structure exhibit degradation and failure. And as a result, in September of the same year, the fishing pier was closed due to safety concern. And since then, staff has been working with a design consultant team from Exotech to develop a design plan, as well as obtaining all of the required permitting in order to replace the fishing pier and the restroom facility. So, with, so in this year, with all of the required permit in place, together with a complete design plan, in March, we will be able to advertise the project for bid. And we only received a single bid from a contractor named Quid Bros. And the bid from Quid Bros. came in at $10,668,000. It was significantly higher than the engineer estimate, which was $5 million, around $5,150,000. And staff has been reviewing the bid proposal together with the consultant team, and we identified two main factors for the price escalation. The first factor was due to strict permitting constraints. So, the design of the fishing pier adheres to various strict environmental regulations from, you know, US Army Corps of Engineer, Department of Natural Resources, as well as the US Department of Fish and Wildlife. And because of that, some structural element of the pier contain high construction risk. And the contractor increased the price to compensate it for that risk. And what we can see from the bid result is that the cost for power driving was nearly $2.5 million higher than the estimate amount. The other factor that we recognized was high inflation rate, supply chain issue, as well as labor shortage. And as a result, we saw that the steel superstructure bid item was $1 million higher than the estimate, and the concrete pier cap was also $1 million higher than the estimate. So, here are a few next steps for the project. Staff and the design consultant team recommended council to reject the bid from Quid Bros. There are two grant partners for the project: Department of Commerce, as well as ROC. And staff has reached out to both grant partners, and they inform about the bid result, and their response has been very supportive of the project. And they inform us that all fundings for the project are secure, so we don't have to worry about that. Right now, we are currently, we are actively evaluating all alternatives, all options, in order to move the project forward. And one of the potential approach is to break the project into different phases, and move forward with the restroom facility first, as a separate project. And, you know, when the, while that happened, we can go back to the table in evaluating the project for the Phase Two, which is for the fishing pier. Yep, that's all I have for my presentation. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Harris.
Don't take this personally. I'm just channeling a question I can imagine from a resident. Assuming that one is not a geologist, civil engineer, or who moonlights doing in-water pile driving, why are they unable to predict this? Yeah, why was it so unforeseeable?
Yeah, like I mentioned, the design was based on very strict environmental constraints. So, we designed the project based on those requirements.
And again, I'm not, I'm not talking to you, but I would ask the vendor, okay, but you already know what the permitting requirements are, right? And you have a sense of ongoing inflation, speaking to the other cost overrun. And so, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just struggling with it, and that's all I got. I mean, if there could be some, it just, that can't just be like, who knew, and then, you know, come back with, it just, that's all I got.
I can provide a little bit of context to that. I think we anticipated more than one bid, right? And so, this bid may be a terrible bid in the whole scheme of things, but if we had four or five bids, you know, we could have maybe, this would have been seen as an outlier on the high end. But this is the only one that we got. And so, part of that relates to the difficulty in the specialty equipment required in building this type of facility. So, and what's mentioned up here on the next steps is, what we're looking at is removing the restroom facility from this project, and that's something that we can, apparently in the bid, the bid that we got for the restroom was within the range of what we anticipated from this contractor. So, by taking that piece out, we can get that out to bid this summer. We would anticipate, because it's just a typical public works project, that we would get multiple bids on that, and then we can proceed with that work hopefully this year and have that done this year. And that would also include updates to the parking lot that would allow us to install the gates and introduce paved parking like we have at, like we will have at the marina. So, we can do all that piece, and then we're going to look at options as far as construction materials, design, anything that we can do that might bring, might do two things: bring the cost down, but also simplify it, so it's not so complex where you only have one company feel like they can do it, and the one company, you know, saw so much risk there that they just threw out a very high number. So, hopefully, doing those two things will allow us to complete the project. You know, unfortunately, the pier piece is going to be delayed, but, you know, doing the restroom now, hopefully, we can, I mean, we need to do the pier, and that's something that needs to get done. So, we'll look at everything we can to simplify that, and then go back out to bid, and hopefully, we'll have multiple bids. And if it comes back high again on all the bids, then we know there's an issue. But when you only have one bid, you don't really know if that's ballpark, or if that's just out of left field because they didn't really want the project anyway.
Okay, if I may, 20 seconds, I'm just, you know, obviously, one does not build a, do in-water building, you know, all that often, but if there is, you know, restroom is more conventional, so it's easier to spec and get within, you know, hit the numbers, but is there some other resource that we can use in developing that, nurturing that expertise, so that we can have more confidence as we bid out other projects in water going forward? That's just, I'm just being rhetorical, that's.
Well, and I think I can answer that to some degree. So, after this bid is rejected, our staff and our consultant are going to reach out. There was a number of construction firms that looked at the plans, attended a meeting, and didn't bid. And so, after this is rejected, we will reach out to them and ask them what their issues were, why didn't they bid the project. And hopefully, that'll allow us to figure out what are the areas of concern, what are they seeing that we're not realizing might be difficult to do or impossible to do. And so, that will also allow us to figure out, hopefully, to simplify this project.
Great answer. So, oh, thank you. Councilmember Oxiger and the deputy mayor Steinmetz.
Yes, can you expand on, if the project is broken into two pieces, can you expand on what you're anticipating for the land side, the restroom, and the installation of the parking gates and all of that? As, what are we looking at? Is still completing that by the end of this year? Or how much time, how much lead time do you have to have on the bid process? You know, when, when could residents down there expect to see something if this, you know, goes as planned?
Yep, yeah. So, the consultant team is currently working on the bid package for the restroom. We anticipate to advertise that portion of the project sometime in June, and hopefully, we can complete the construction of the restroom by the end of this year.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, if I can just kind of try to ask this. I mean, the strict environmental regulations have been on the books for some time. Why is the cost of Why is the cost of compliance with that so far out of line with the one bid that we got? And what's the plan to figure out why? That seems to, that seems to have been a big driver in the bid that we got coming in so high.
Team, I can provide information. Yeah, so I can provide some technical information, especially let's say for the, for the pier pile, right? One of the environmental requirement is for the surface area of that pile to stay the same with the existing timber pile, which is only 12-inch. And when you replace that with steel pile, it's significantly smaller in diameter. When it, when it, when you're talking about driving pile, 12 inches is not much. So in, in order to increase the capacity of the pile, our design team has come up with a solution, which is we're going to have to drop in steel cage and put in the concrete inside of the pile to increase the capacity of it. And that by itself is a special operation for the contractor. And, yeah, so instead of being able to design the pier with a pile of diameter of like 16 or 18-inch in diameter, which is going to make the design a lot easier, we're going to have to stick with 12-inch.
So I think, I think, so that's the complexity piece, right? I, when you only get one bid, it's hard to say, you know, I mean, when we get five bids, sometimes we'll get bids around our engineer's estimate, and then we get them two times as high, right? I mean, they can be all over the board. And so it's hard to say, when you only get one, that this bid is actually what, what it should cost, which we don't think it should cost this much. But what we can do is work to, whatever we can do to kind of simplify what's required, make it clear, understandable, so that we, so that we can get more bids. And if we get four bids and they all come in at 10 million, then that's, that's probably, our engineer estimate was, was low. But we think that if we can kind of flush some of this stuff out, see what issues are, see what concerns were with the bidding process, you know, that we should be, if we get, the more bids that we get, we should see some lower dollar amounts.
Councilmember Harris.
Real quick, how deep are these, how deep are these piles going to have to go?
Yeah, so most, most of the piles are ranged from 30 to 40 feet deep.
Thank you.
Any questions? Right. Thank you, Kai.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kai. And that concludes my city manager report. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. So next we move to the consent agenda. Clerk, could you please read the consent agenda?
Item one, approval of vouchers. Item two, approval of minutes. Item three, mental health awareness month proclamation. Item four, 2024 Des Moines Farmers Market Agreement. Item five, Des Moines Memorial Drive Pipe Project Interlocal Agreement with Highline Water District. Item six, Midway Design Consultant Contract. Item seven, bid rejection Redondo Pier and Fishing, or Redondo Fishing Pier and Restroom Project. Item eight, South Sound Opening Boating Day Proclamation. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to approve the consent calendar as read.
Second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mahoney. Is there an item that a council member wishes to pull before we vote? All right. All in favor? Seven zero, looks like it's unanimous. Thank you. I have a couple of proclamations to read here. Okay, this one first. Whereas mental health is part of overall health, and whereas one in five adults experiences a mental health problem in any given year, and one in 17 adults lives with mental illness such as major depression, bipolar disorder, or schizophrenia. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States, and the second leading cause among young adults, and 90% of people who die by suicide had shown symptoms of a mental health condition according to interviews with family, friends, and medical professionals. And whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness and recovery. And whereas it's important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it's needed. And whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping and the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. And whereas public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. The Des Moines City Council hereby proclaims the month of May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month, and encourages all citizens, businesses, schools, and community organizations to take the stigma-free pledge at www.nami.org/stigmafree in observance of Mental Health Awareness Month, signed this 25th day of April 2024. Tracy Buxton, Mayor. Not supposed to clap, but I think I would allow that if you want to right now. Honestly, it's worth it. Okay. I do want to say in regard to this proclamation that many of you may have heard, but there's a new number for suicide prevention call number 988. And ValleyCom takes those calls, local write-down over here. And there's somebody you can talk to, so, or let somebody you know. 988, three important numbers. Okay, next proclamation. Whereas the City of Des Moines wishes to recognize and celebrate the 2024 South Sound Opening Day of Boating Season. Whereas the Des Moines Yacht Club annually hosts the South Sound Opening Day of Boating Season Ceremony, which gathers the many south Puget Sound yacht clubs, along with Des Moines residents and their surrounding neighboring communities to participate and enjoy this ceremony. And whereas the ceremony advocates for safe enjoyment of boating, and as such, recognizes and supports the upcoming National Safe Boating Week, May 18 through the 24th. And whereas this ceremony promotes the Des Moines waterfront amenities serving the Pacific Northwest boating community. Now therefore, the Des Moines Council hereby proclaims May 11, 2024, as this year's South Sound Opening Day of Boating Season, and urges all residents to join them in this recognition. Signed, the 25th day of April 2024, Tracy Buxton, Mayor. Now, I would like to offer an opportunity to Debbie to come up and receive this proclamation with the photo op. Thanks, huge patience. I went to go get some water, and I saw this in there. So I grabbed this and I stole it from somebody. So I'll pay you for it if it's yours, let me know. All right, we did not pull any consent items. Next up, we have unfinished business. And this is the, item number one under unfinished business is the city manager recruitment. And we're going to receive, the purposes of this item is for the council to review and approve the remaining items needed to advance the city manager recruitment process. And so we'll have a short briefing with Assistant Manager A.J. Johnson-Newton. Thank you.
Good evening, council staff and community members. My name is A.J. Johnson-Newton, and I am the Assistant City Manager. And as you can tell, we are getting very close to posting our recruitment for the, for our city manager vacancy. Next slide, please. So just to recap how far we've come, so we've secured our executive search firm to conduct the city manager recruitment. We've updated the city manager job description. We adopted a new salary methodology and arranged for the 2024 city manager pay schedule. And then each of the council members had an opportunity to meet with the consultant separately this past week, and they participated in listening sessions where they were asked things like, what are their top two priorities or projects for the next city manager? What goals would they like to see accomplished by the next city manager in their first year? And what are some key characteristics or qualities they would like to see in the next city manager? So one thing I'd just like to mention about this slide is that the four bullet points don't really accurately capture how much we've been in the weeds doing this work. So I want to thank the council. It is a lot of work. It can feel mundane at times, but it is really important because this is all the prep work that's going to make our recruitment successful. Next slide, please. Okay, so as we run down to the, the final countdown, we need to review and adopt the city position profile. So a little bit of about the city position profile. So it's a questionnaire that was provided to us from SGR that has a lot of questions about the city. I will show it so you guys can review it. Council members have had an opportunity to review the information that staff put in, and there were also some places for the council to weigh in. And so tonight, I'm just asking to review with the council specifically the areas that we wanted to have you review, and so we can finish that up. Once we get direction from the council, we'll do a final grammar review, make sure we didn't miss anything. And then we would turn that over to the consultant on Tuesday, April 30. They'll take this information and they will be using it to create the recruitment brochure. So, Tara, if you could pull it up, please. Thank you. I got excited. Okay, so here's the questionnaire. And you note that I have it in draft form. So basically, they're asking information about our organization. You can slide down a little bit as we go, Tara, thank you. The salary range for the position. One of the questions that is remaining for the council is, is residency within city limits required? So right now, I have TBD. Technically, I believe that is required per, I think, our ordinance. Excuse me about that incorrect. But I did note that someone had put that they'd like to have preferred. So the question is, what do you want me to put here?
Councilmember Mahoney.
I was the one that made the recommendation on preferred. And the reason why I did that is, there was some discussion earlier in a couple of, I can't remember which of the many meetings we've had so far on this, but we talked about we, the desire that we wanted to live in the community, but we were also realistic that to get somebody that could be a stellar candidate, maybe they're live fairly close or within the region or something, and the change was something they didn't want to do, like displacing their kids or something like that. I think we need to leave our options open, understanding the requirement is they do live here, and make that a consideration. We, as I said, we want to cast the net wider, and so that's why I thought preferred was a better choice of words at this juncture.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, just to expand upon that idea, and I don't know the answer, so maybe this is a question for A.J., would it be better to give like a specific radius, you know, within 25 miles of the city so that the city manager could respond, rather than just saying preferred? I don't, I don't know what plays better in this situation. I'm obviously not a marketer to city managers. But a little guidance might help us as to what sort of specificity is needed, and, you know, whether preferred or a radius, or yes, need to live here.
I think preferred would make the most sense. And the, the reason for my answer on that is, one, listening to the consultant when he came to the Citizens Advisory Group. And he mentioned that the pool for qualified or quality candidate managers as much, or city, city manager candidates, excuse me, is much smaller than it has been in the past. The other piece is the housing market. It's really expensive now. And also, I think there's some risk, right, for any candidate that comes uprooting your family, maybe selling your home, and then buying a home in a city close to your job. And not that I would think that this, you know, we want to put negative energy in the air, but, you know, if that was, if later the council decided to make a different decision, you know, that could be personally draining on their resources. So I think leaving it preferred and sort of just having it open allows the council to consider that as you go forward, sort of in the context of the candidates you have in front of you.
If I can just follow up, then, I mean, I would be really disinclined to have somebody who lives in Yakima and is commuting. I, I think that would be not a good situation. But, you know, somebody that lived in Federal Way, Auburn, in, in the immediate area, you know, that's certainly suitable. How do we strike that balance so that there is an expectation that if you're not, you know, within an easy commuting distance, you know, you would be expected to move to the area? And they would deal with the finances and the moving and all of that as presumably part of the negotiation?
Right. And, and that's exactly the answer, be part of the negotiations. So that, to me, potentially, if I was on the council, that may be a deal breaker. And so if I, if you guys did find a candidate that was in Yakima and was making that request, that may be a thing that at that point, negotiations stop. So that's something you could make as part of the employment agreement to lock that in. All this really does is just leave it open right now, and then sort of reserve the right to make that decision as you get closer to making a decision on your candidate.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Councilmember Mahoney.
I just, I just want to add again to the point about preferred. Recent news, Sea-Tac just lost their city manager. That's going to increase the competition we're going to be facing on all levels of salary and accommodations and so forth. So we got to leave it open.
Just a point of clarification. So would, I'm, I'm hoping that you would, or that SGR would at least let us know before they presented a finalist who lived far away. In other words, that we wouldn't, that they would not call the pool so that we end up with our three finalists or our five finalists, and one of them is outside a radius that we prefer, that, that when we get our finalists, how many number, how many of that is three or five, that they're all within a radius that we appreciate? So, so that we don't end up with accidentally four when we could have had five. Do you understand my question?
Yeah, I do. As the hiring authority, I think I would communicate that to consultant to be aware of that as they go through in looking at applications. And that is something that would not be either favorable to the council, or that would be a discussion that they could have on the back end with, with the candidates before they get in front of you.
Early, yeah. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. All right.
Okay, could you scroll down? Oh, sorry.
Point of order, do we need a request to staff to change the ordinance then to preferred?
It's not an ordinance.
It is state law that says that councils can require a city manager to live within the city limits, but you don't have to. So.
Oh, do we?
We don't have an ordinance.
You don't? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought A.J. said she thought there was one in there.
Yeah.
I apologize. I looked to Tim. Puppy dog eyes, he didn't pick it up.
Yeah. I'm the city attorney tonight as well, since our city attorney's at a conference, so. But we handled that in the contract with previous city managers. There was a requirement that for our last two, that they live within the city, and that piece was in their contract. So like we mentioned, if we had a requirement of someone that lived in Yakima but was the favorite, we could put in the contract that they would have to live within 25 miles of the city or something like that, within a certain number of months or something like that, so.
And do we need some way to show consensus on, on preferred?
Who agrees to, if you agree that you would like preferred, do we need to take a vote on this?
I think we just need to know that there's council support, so you can do it how you'd like.
A head nod, is there anybody?
I'm raising my hand.
Okay, let's raise our hands. If you would like the word preferred, please raise your right hand. Oh, seven zero, good. Thank you. Good recommendation. Next.
Thank you. So Tara, if you could continue to scroll down until we get to the next highlighted section. section on your, thank you. So this is just information about the community, describing things that go on in the community that are pretty fun to attend, our local sports teams. So here, this takes us to the next questions that we ask the council to weigh in on. What makes our community special and why should candidates want to live here? So the feedback, at least that I saw that we received, is one of the things was what makes the community special. It's a waterside community with great upside. So my question to the council, is there anything additional that you'd like us to add, if that's sort of the general subject matter of, you know, what we would like to highlight about what makes our community special? You know, HR can certainly sort of dress that up and jazz it up for the SGR consultant.
All right, Councilmember Mahoney.
That was my suggestion. Again, what I was trying to do is think of something quick and simple, to the point. And that's why I just waterside community with great upside. I thought it was kind of encompassing. What I kind of visioned or wanted to be careful of is trying to get 37 things in there when we just want a simple message. There's a lot of information here. If we're short and to the point, it's effective. And I thought that kind of covered, you know, although generally, but, but did, did a good job of covering. That's why I made that recommendation.
Any other comments or recommendations? Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, actually, I was going to ask, is, is this a bullet point or is this a paragraph? I'm assuming it's a bullet point, and I think that that suggestion pretty well encompasses the bullet point, although we might want to, you know, waterside community with great upside and lots of diversity or something along those lines. Because I do think the fact that this is a diverse community does make it special.
To answer your question, I don't know if it's a bullet point or sort of a full paragraph because essentially, we're providing this information to SGR, and we'll have some examples coming up. And then they'll use their artistic license to put this all together. So they may, I think it's fine if the council doesn't really want to have like a full paragraph here, but here's the things we want to highlight. And I think it's fine to expect SGR to take that and to do what, you know, I suggested, which is to jazz it up.
Uh, dip, uh, excuse me, Councilmember Mahoney.
Call me whatever.
Whatever.
Been a lot of things in the city at, at times. Some good, some bad. I, 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 I thought that's an excellent point. I'd just say add the word diverse, diverse waterside community with, with a lot of upside. You know, something of that simple.
Oh, go ahead. One more? Oh, you're gonna, well, I, I kind of like culturally rich, but, so, doesn't matter. Okay, this, this concept, everybody in favor of adding that concept? It's like seven zero? Okay.
Thank you for that. And then the next bullet point is why should candidates want to live here? So the feedback that I was able to find was beautiful setting and a great community, want to be part of it. Is there anything else that we want to include for the consultant to have to work with?
Councilmember Harris.
So it's more a question. I mean, these two bullet points strike me as suspiciously similar. I mean, are, do, do we need both?
What I would say is I think we should give them as much information as possible because the recruitment brochure essentially is our advertisement. And to one of the council members' point earlier, we know that we are competing for a city manager and, right, and the pool is already small. So I think if we can give them enough to work with, whether it ends up in the final pro, you know, product, I don't know.
Basically, we are in one of the most beautiful parts of Puget Sound, which makes this one of the most beautiful places on planet Earth. And I think that is underappreciated because we take it for granted. But there are like 50 different marinas in the area that I've visited. I mean, seriously, if you had a boat here and everything, you know, and when we moved here, you could, within three hours, you'd be in Vancouver or you'd be down to Portland. It's a tourism mecca. I mean, truly, and, you know, everything except for, well, even desert. So I, it's really underappreciated that if you live here, it's not just Des Moines, it's your proximity, you know, I hate to say at the airport, but also just, just all the, just fun things you can do here in relatively short order. That's it.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I think that's a beautiful idea. The word beautiful needs to be in there over and over. And I think that, that is a great concept. But I also think the idea that this is a family-friendly area. And, you know, that's why I moved here. It's a good place to raise the kids. And we've done that, you know, raised two boys here, and it's been great. And I think that we want to encourage that and keep that in there. So I just think family-friendly or something, you can make the word sparkle better than I can. But I, I think the idea of the natural beauty and the idea of family-friendly are, should be in that.
Okay, I think I got it. Anything else?
Yeah, anything else? Kind of segueing from that, within an hour, you can be in the wilderness or in, or a dense urban environment. So you could metro, you're a huge metro area one hour away from any kind of geography, whether it's skiing or water skiing or hiking, boating, climbing, recreation.
I will say that we, when we've interviewed candidates from out of state before, and we asked essentially why you're interested in becoming, you know, to Des Moines specifically, the diversity of the Pacific Northwest is a big draw. So this was a very good suggestion by the council.
Okay. You looking for more feedback or?
I think we have enough unless there's something else that wants to be added. So we can just scroll through here, but there's nothing really left other than probably the last page. And this was attached to the council packet if the community is interested in what's specifically on the position profile. And then the council, we uploaded a number of photos for the graphic designer for SGR to review and select from. So we're just going to give them a pile of photos and say, hey, pick the best ones that sort of represent, you know, the template that we selected and the language that you're going to be using at that time. So thank you for this direction, and that concludes this portion of my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, any other, before we go, so what we're doing is we're just, we are dividing this city manager recruitment discussion into four parts, four bullets. And that was the first bullet. So before we move on, the next item is the brochure, correct, A.J.?
Yes.
So before we move to the next bullet, meaning discussing the brochure, any more questions on this profile? Okay, good?
Yep.
Go ahead and move to the second one then.
Thank you. Next slide, Tara, please. So just a comment about this. Really, what I'm asking the council to do here, so SGR provided us templates, which really is this open recruitment that they have. So you can see, you know, what the different cities have selected for their, it's not necessarily just city manager, but their executive level positions that they're recruiting for. Again, when we're looking at these templates or these active brochures, it's really just about marketing, right? It may seem silly, but all of these details do matter. And they will improve our chances of attracting quality candidates, at least to get them to apply, right? Because it's one thing that, what the brochure is designed to do is capture their attention, give them enough information, and then get that to become action. And so gone are the days where we can put something out on our website with a long, boring description, no pictures. That's just not where we're at today. So I, I don't, I don't claim to be a fisherman. I'm just went fishing for the first time. But think about it, for those who do, we're near water, about fishing, right? So it's all about the bait and the lure. Hopefully, that's the right terminology. So please go ahead and bring this up. Okay, so really, Tara, I think if we could just explore a few of these websites here. Yep, let's see if they have assistant city manager. So these keep, like I said, these are just open recruitment, so they're just kind of all around.
I'll make a quick suggestion. I go down the city manager, I particularly liked the Manhattan-Kansas one when I was reviewing them. It's city manager, it's down, there it is. It's like the second from the bottom. Okay, this is a, a starting point.
It looks, it's on. It's on.
So if you just want to kind of go through the various elements just so people can get a sense. I will say this is a pretty great design, from my opinion. I have looked at the other ones too, and I, I agree with you. This was a pretty strong one. You know, obviously, we would want to use our color scheme, not red. But I, I do like sort of the layout to tell our story.
Yeah, I, as I was going through them, it was the one, you know, I started with the city manager ones, and I went to some of the other ones. But I figured with the bigger positions, they would probably put the most effort into the brochure. I did find some police chiefs and some other ones that were pretty good. But I thought this was kind of encompassed a lot of the different elements that I saw in portions of the others. I thought it was the most wholesome summary of them.
Yeah, because particularly in this position, right, they're going to want to know about the community that they may particularly be moving to, you know, they want to know about the structure of City Hall. And I just, I do, I agree. I just think the, the format looks really great. But we could go and look at the, another one just for comparison. But you have good taste, Matt. Yeah, just to med for it. This one's nice, but again, just from my HRI, and the council's free to do whatever they want. I feel like the pictures kind of overcrowd the, the words, and I felt like the other one was a better balance. So that was sort of my feel on this one.
That's exactly what my, my opinion was too, is, yeah, the pictures were oversized, and it made the reading more like reading more in peace than it was, you know, informational.
Right, agreed.
I have some input on that, too. I, if it's too busy, some people don't appreciate it. I mean, too many colors. So there are a lot of colors here. And then if you switch up the background with the text, I, my input was, you know, less words, more pi, more pictures. A picture's worth a thousand words. But, and so I think informational is good. But if there's too many, too many colors and too many fonts, it gets very busy. Any other?
Does the council want to look at the third one and then make a decision?
Sure.
Miami.
I was disappointed when I saw it was Oklahoma.
Yeah, I would say this one, and I heard someone in the audience say has the opposite issue, where it's too much text. Yeah. And so it's just not visually appealing. That doesn't mean that it wouldn't draw people in, but I just kind of find it, it's just too reliant on the words and not enough on the, on the pictures. And given our landscape and the pictures that we have available, I think it's important to try to highlight both, right? The importance, the role and the information we're providing and the beauty of, of our city.
Any questions or comments? So I, I do want to agree that I think the photos, if we, if that's one of the main things that we talked about, why somebody would want to move here, that you highlight the beauty. I mean, it's nice to do buildings and people, but include, you know, a sunset picture, you know, or, I mean, that's why people flock to the beach in the evenings. So something like, stuff like that. Okay, so are you wanting our feedback on which one of those brochures that we saw that we liked the best?
Because that's what I will be, I'm telling the consultant that we'd like to borrow from to build our brochure.
So I'll just go, who liked number one the best?
The Manhattan-Kansas yours?
Yeah. The first one we saw the best, that looks like four of us. Who liked the second one the best? And who liked the third one that we just saw the best? Okay, only four of us have opinions, but it does turn out to be majority. So it sounds like we'll go with that then. Did you have a question?
Well, you know, and this will sound very old guy and perhaps stroppy, but, you know, unless it were bacon flavored or perhaps single malt, I would, I'm not a marketer, you know, and so I'm just wondering, I don't know how to put this any gentler. Like, wouldn't SGR be best qualified to develop this kind of thing? Or, I mean, you know, is this typical that, you know, the city chooses this design thing? Okay, that's, that's all. Thanks.
Yeah. And, and, and I would agree. Some people are like, I don't care, I'll give you the information, and you can use your artistic license. And some people are very conscious about how you're marketing your position. And so I think it's important because, again, if they do not, we risk losing people not applying if we're not marketing, marketed appropriately.
Don't get, don't get me wrong. It's not that I don't have a preference. It's that my preference may not be the same preference as, you know, the best people out there, the people who want to be city managers. And so that's, I just don't feel qualified. Anyway, thanks.
Okay, that concludes this portion of my presentation. Thank you.
Oh, I have one more question. Are we moving on to the third bullet or moving on to a different aspect of the brochures?
The, the third bullet. So they'll take the city position profile and the photos, and then they're going to take the template for Manhattan, and then essentially take their, use their artistic license and create our version of the Manhattan brochure.
Okay, so one question that was on, on the profile page here that we didn't, that I have a strong opinion on, and it's fine if my colleagues don't, but to choose the logo that we, that we use on it. We commonly put an updated logo on a lot of documents and even on our website, but it hasn't officially been changed. So some other, we have, so we have two very different logos that we use. Which are we going to choose for this brochure, and do we want to ask the council?
I think it's a great question to the council, but I'd like to give you another one to look at.
Oh, right. Right, well, I, I thought it was still on here, so.
Yeah. But I would ask that we could move that part over to May 2. I don't think it will prevent the graphic designer from starting. They can just put a hold because I'd like to have it up so you guys can look at it.
Okay, good. So bullet number three, review the timeline and adopt it? All right.
Okay. So before we, before we pull up the draft recruitment timeline proposal, just a few things to keep in mind. We created it in-house, so it's conservative. I will say that right off the gate, right out the gate. It considers our currently scheduled council meetings. So there is some consideration as we go through sort of the milestones through the recruitment timeline. We, we tried to think about allowing time for council to review prior to the meeting. It may overestimate SGR's timing, and this will be, make more sense when we put up the, the recruitment timeline because I don't sense when we put up the recruitment timeline, because I don't necessarily know how long certain things will take, so I'm just guessing. And then the other piece is that the final, one thing to keep in mind, is that the final offer to the candidate does not necessarily equal when they would start. So when you see October 1st on the draft timeline, that doesn't necessarily mean they would be here October 1st, that's just me guessing, and quite frankly, I'm probably being overly optimistic if you guys were to be able to decide on September 5th, particularly if someone's out of state. So just the other piece that I wanted to mention. And last thing, and, you know, I want to be very optimistic, but we need to also be realistic. We're assuming that when we do all of our prep work and we get our recruitment brochure out there, that we're going, in the 45 days which is proposed to have this posted, that we're going to get quality applicants that you guys are interested in. So just keep in mind, that, that really is the unknown. So we're doing as much as we can to try to attract a candidate, but the one part we can't control is who applies and who's a quality candidate. So this is assuming best-case scenarios all the way through. Okay, thank you. Next slide, please, and you can pull up the timeline. One of the reasons it's important, I think, for the council to adopt a proposed timeline is, one, this gives direction and expectation to the consultant, right? And so I think that's important as we move forward, so he can sort of measure, like I said, who's coming in, you know, what the quality of the candidates are versus the council's expectations. So I think this just starts ensuring that we're all on the same page at the start of the recruitment and the end, and it highlights, you know, what we are hoping to accomplish as we go through this process. So, right now, what this says is that next Tuesday, we'll be able to turn over to SGR all of the information they need to be able to create their, the recruitment brochure on our behalf. And I think the consultant indicated that their graphic designer needs just about two weeks to be able to pull together recruitment brochure. I am assuming there'll probably be some back and forth about, does this placement of this picture look good, you know, those types of things. If the council prefers, you know, we're happy to do that at the city level, so we can expedite getting it posted on, on May 14th. So that is a question back to the council. And again, you, you don't have to decide tonight. We could pick up that question next, next week, but something to consider. And so they would post on May 14th. One of the things that the consultant's going to be asking the council is, excuse me, so they have a sort of preset or predetermined list of places that they advertise. There's some places that I think would also make sense that I didn't see on their list, but they will ask for approval, or if there's other places that they may have missed. And so I'm happy, me and my HR team are happy to give that feedback and send that to the council for review, just because it's something we do every day, so we have a sense of what may be missing beyond what they have already proposed. So that is something, if the council agrees, or it prefers, we can make that decision on your guys' behalf, but we could still provide the list of where we think would make the most sense to post beyond what the SGR consultant proposes. So, again, just something to think about for next week. Okay, so it would go up on May 14th, and then June 30th it would close. I know when the consultant came, he said that they want at least 30 days. I think 45 days makes the most sense. One of the things that we should request of the consultant is to do a check-in sort of halfway between, to see what the candidate pool looks like, because if we're going to want to extend the opening, I'd like, usually it's smarter to do that before June 30th. So I made a note, but I also wanted to let the council know that that is something that, if I was the hiring authority, I would ask the consultant to make sure that we're getting sort of regular check-ins, at least on the number of applicants, and generally kind of the quality, or, you know, how close are they to the requirements of the position that you guys have already given them. So then if there's a decision that needs to be made to leave the posting open for longer, we can do that earlier. Okay, and so, as I understand it, once the recruitment closes on June 30th, they do the initial sort of review, and they will cut the candidate pool. And they, they won't send the applications to us, so I won't see them, you guys won't see them, and I'm sure the consultant will go into this more next week, but basically it's to protect people's privacy, because again, we don't, you know, you may have applied, but you may not want to let your current job know, or you don't know what's going to happen, so they just want to ensure that they protect the applicants. And so they're going to be taking the feedback that you gave them, the job description, and sort of making a decision on who they put in front of the council. One thing that if I was a hiring authority, I would ask is, how many people did you screen out, and why? So we don't necessarily need to know the names, but I would want to know, who did you screen out and why? I think that helps us make sure that they are aligned with your guys' priorities, so it's a suggestion. Okay, so then on July 11th, which is a council meeting, there's a calendar, I think, in your guys' packet, if you want to follow along. You guys would be able to receive, I think he said seven to 10 candidates, and that's assuming there's seven to 10 that, you know, of course, meet our qualifications, and be able to review that applicant pool and select the semifinalists. That will need to be done in an executive session, again, to protect the, the privacy of the candidates, so just want to mention that now. Once you guys make your determination, then they'll take about seven days, and they're going to go back to those semifinalists and give them a written questionnaire, a recorded one-way semifinalist interview, which, as I understand it, they give them a set of questions, they record themselves answering, then they send that in, and then they do a media search. They describe that later on down, which I don't have in here, but in, in the agenda packet, I included the rest of the, sort of the phases in the description, so you can go back and look at that. And I would expect that the consultant goes over this next week with you, or, when, the next time you move the consultant, I would expect that he would also go over you, go over with you what that basically means. So, we get all the information back, then they would turn that over to the council. You guys would have time to review that, and then by the time we came back to July 25th, you guys would determine who the finalists were. And likely, again, that will be in an executive session. Once you narrow that pool down, then they, this, it turns, so number seven is SGR, so they will start to do, they'll do another comprehensive media, media search, they'll start to do the background investigation, and, you know, some other pieces in here. Additionally, this would be the people that, the evaluation of fines, those are the people we're bringing on site. So, that's what that July, that 20, the July 25th meeting would be. This is when we're deciding who you guys want in front of you to interview. You'll note that, right now, we're proposing to begin the interview process on August 26th. That might feel like a really big gap, but there's a couple things. We need to give people time to plan to come, and if we need to fly people in, we need to be able to make those travel arrangements for them. So the consultant did indicate that if you wanted him on site, he would be available, again, as a recommendation, and we'll, we'll talk more about this over and over, but I would suggest it, because what that does is, he could act as the handler, so to speak, for the candidates. And so, essentially, we would do interviews the week of August 26th. You guys would do your deliberations, decide who you want, and then by September 5th, we'd enter into negotiations, you know, on the employment agreement, and then you could make your, your vote to confirm them the following council meeting, September 12th. So like I said, the start date is October 1st, I think that's really ambitious. You know, I, and again, I think this is probably conservative, because maybe some of the steps that HGR is doing, the timeline can be condensed, but I think where we may run into issues is trying to accommodate when our council meetings are, and then make sure you guys have enough time before the council meeting to review the information, so you can come and have a thoughtful discussion. So, just FYI. Okay, is there any questions?
Councilmember Harris.
So, you know, because I was off in Oahu in my mind, I forget the specifics, but I believe you mentioned at least twice about decisions that, you know, maybe we don't have to make tonight. So I would just, you know, I don't know how to frame this in terms of emotion, but basically, any decisions we can make that make, streamlines your process, if it's, in other words, does, do deferring decisions to May the 2nd lengthen or make your, you know, process any more challenging?
No, because, back to the title of the presentation, the final countdown, the decisions that you are in the direction that I'm receiving from the council tonight, really at this point, once I hand it over to the consultant, it's their show, right? So it's their responsibility to get that recruitment brochure up, and they'll really be taking the reins. Obviously, I will be acting as the council's liaison, and, you know, taking direction from you to make sure that they're doing their things, but, but really, once I hand that over on April 30th, it's really on the consultant to take the reins, probably until we get to interview.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
I think there are a lot of things that have been mentioned, where you said you could, you know, sort of do, like, do you like these pictures in the brochure or not? Please, as far as I'm concerned, at least, and I'm speaking for everybody up here. Just, go ahead. You can make that decision. I don't know enough about putting together graphics. I think Councilman Oaxinger is another person that really has a background in, in doing, you know, some kind of graphic design work. You know, it's not my specialty, put it out there, and I kind of agree with what Councilmember Harris said about, I'm not qualified. I don't feel qualified to, to make a decision like that, because what I might like isn't necessarily what's going to sell. So, please, at least from my perspective, don't include us in the minutia. We need to be included in the big decisions, obviously. Secondly, about the timeline, you know, we're at a point where, I guess this looks pretty realistic, but I'm really disappointed. When we decided to reassign Mr. Mathias and go down this path, I think everybody who was there was looking at June 30th, as the date we wanted, if not somebody starting at least, know who that was going to be. And we're nowhere near that. In fact, you know, June 30th is when we're going to close for applications under this timeline. That's going to impact a lot of people, not the least of which is Mr. George, who's going to have, at least on this timeline, four more months on the job, and I know he's got a family that he needs to, you know, spend time with, and it's a, it's a big impact on him. I, I'm assuming, Mr. George, if I may ask, are you okay with staying on in the interim position for, to meet this timeline?
Well, I think it's at time and a half, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Or double time, maybe in the summer? No. Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, I'm.
Serious. I, I think it's impacting people, and I really want to be conscious of that.
I appreciate the question, and yes, I mean, I, I'm committed to being in this position until we get somebody here for the long haul. And I think, yeah, we just want the right person, and so I'll do what I need to do in the interim.
Yeah, and we could not be able to get to somebody by October. It could extend into the beginning of next year, as terrible as that sounds. But, you know, kudos to the communication aspect. You know, as we heard tonight, you're doing, you're doing a great job, but, boy, you know, this is a long time to go without a permanent city manager, particularly in light of, you know, the budget that needs to come up, the new positions that are, you know, being pushed for, and a lot of people are very interested in, including us up here. A lot of, you know, sort of design of how the city staff's going to work. There, there's a lot of questions, and this is a long time to go without somebody. So, although, you know, at this point, I don't think we have much choice but to accept the timeline. It's very frustrating, and I, and I want everybody to understand that, you know, when we started this process, I think the expectation was we'd have somebody by, by June 30th, and there's just no way to get there right now, and that's very frustrating.
So AJ, I, I do have a question, comment, and maybe you can help clarify. So in my inter, my interview today, I was talking a little bit about this, and he said, well, and this is another, this is our next decision, when he's going to come to the table or make a visit, but he did say he's got some strategies for reducing this timeline, and he'd like to discuss those with us, but that's not until May 2nd. And to Councilmember Harris' point, is, is if we wait to make this decision until our May 2nd conversation, is that going to slow us down even more? So if you could have any input on that?
Yeah, so this isn't designed to be, like, this has to happen. This is a starting point, right? And so I wanted to be able to give the consultant something to work from when you guys meet with him next time, of like, potentially, here's what we're kind of thinking, and, you know, you can feel free to say, here's sort of what our HR folks have worked out. Is there places within this timeline, if that's the desire of the council, where we can make some cuts, so we can save some time? One of them may be not doing 45 days for posts, maybe it's 30 days, and maybe that same assessment that I mentioned to you guys earlier, maybe at two weeks, we see how many applicants we have in the pool. If it seems like they're really qualified, great, we'll go for 30 days, that saves us two weeks. So I think there's opportunities to work with the consultant, to be able to figure out strategies, because what I had to do was kind of guess how long some of the pieces that we're not going to do are going to take. The one thing I think the council will just have to be mindful of, is that because we are working as a collective, right, that we need to keep in mind when the council meetings are, and then ensuring that you guys have enough time to review the inform, whatever the information is, to be able to come to the council to make a decision. So, that's my comment.
Yeah, and we did decide we wanted to be involved in the minutia at the beginning. I mean, that offer was made, but it wasn't, I think for those who maybe had made that decision, maybe it wasn't clear what that, what would that might entail. But also, the word adopt, I somehow, when it says adopt this, so this is not a formal part of our contract with them, that they're going to stay inside of anything. Okay, so this is also going to be a head nod? Okay, all right, that's a little more clear as well. Anything else before I ask? Oh, thank you. Were you raising your hand, too, Councilmember Harris?
I realized it was a stupid question.
Oh, no stupid questions.
No, there really aren't.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Real quick, I don't have an issue with 45 days. I think that's realistic. I thought we were really pretty aggressive before. I, I shared the disappointment, the whole master plan, but we, we started later on the process. But the 45 days, I think, is, is an acceptable limit. He may come with a suggestion, I can do it in 30, and that's great. But here's, here's where I think we can help. So you look at the August, week of August 26th, and I know this is tentative, but here's examples. So stakeholder engagements, this is where we can make sure, if we can figure this out on the May 2nd, so maybe it's the second week of August, maybe it's the 3rd, maybe it's the 4th, so we've got the CAC and their ability to talk to them. I was on the CAC when we did the last hiring process. It was great. We got to talk to the candidates, and then they, then there was an opportunity for some of the public. But making sure that everybody's going to be available, so the longer timeframe might benefit us in the fact that if we need to schedule, we need it, then we're going to get the public need met, we're going to get our needs met, and so forth. So I think in the May 2nd one, that August 26th week is the crucial week, whether it's the first, second, third, or fourth week of the month, where we're available, where our, we've notified the parties like the CAC and these other ones to be ready to go. And then that's when I think you might be able to shorten the curve on the backing. So I just make that recommendation.
Great strategy. Councilmember Harris Matsui, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, AJ, for putting all of this together, and for scheduling all of our listening sessions and our opportunity to talk with David Dwan individually about what our, our thoughts are about the city manager search, and what we might need in that next individual. I do agree that I think that our initial timeline and thinking that someone would be hired and have their butt in the seat by June 30th was most likely unrealistic. And this timeline, to me, seems much more realistic for an executive-level recruitment. I do think that we can shave off pieces here and there, and it also depends on what our response is like. Do you get five applications, or do you get 50? And that may change our timeline tremendously. We might say, oh my gosh, we need more publicity, we need to go out, we need to call more folks, get them to apply, or we might go, oh, 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 let's stop and go forward and see how fast we can get these steps done. So I like the idea that it's a roadmap. It's not a prescriptive, like, you will do this thing by this date, but it keeps us on track, and it gives us an idea of what the steps are laid out, so that we can clearly communicate to folks, like, what stage we're in, what decision points are coming. decision points are coming up next, how they can be involved perhaps in the next decision making. And as someone who's worked with candidates all the time, you cannot control what candidates do. You can try, but they're human beings, and they will do things like pull out, accept another job. Their kid goes to school in Europe, and they've decided to go to Spain to go to school with them. Anything can happen. And so, having that flexibility means that you can also make sure that you have a backup plan. Because when you put all of your eggs in one basket and go, we're going to have exactly a candidate we need on July 1, and then that doesn't happen, then you have to go back to the drawing board. And I would like to avoid that. So, I think that this gives us the flexibility, a realistic timeline, and a roadmap that we can follow. And so, I appreciate you putting pen to paper and getting this out for us.
Thank you. I was going to say, as an HR professional, I've never had a hiring authority tell me, take as long as you need. But, but what I will say is, when we've made the right hire, no one has regretted the time that it's taken.
Okay, looks like we're, we're good. If you want to move on?
Okay, then I will provide this to, to the consultant as the basis for the conversation on me. Well, we'll see if it's May 2nd, but, thank you. So, this concludes this portion of my presentation. Okay, so we've talked a lot about the consultant. Our agreement with SGR provides for two onsite visits as part of our fee. So, that's just covered in the amount that we're going to pay, or that we're paying for the, for the contract. We can schedule more than two visits, but it is at an additional cost. We all know that the last time that we brought them in for the meet and greet, we had a lot of technology issues. It just really, I don't think, was our best moment in terms of having a meet and greet with the consultant and sort of setting, kick, you know, starting off on the project. So, next, on May 2nd, is a study session. And what I am recommending to the council, or we're recommending to the council, is to actually have the consultant come onsite. I think it'll be the right environment with the study session. I think we're at a place where you guys, we now got sort of the prep work out the way, and now we can get into the nitty gritty of the other things that you guys are going to be concerned about, what's process look like, you know, whatever. There's just be a better opportunity, I think, to get away from some of the minutia, like we've discussed, and start to get to the net and bolts of the recruitment that I think not only the council cares about, but the community cares about, and staff. So, I just think that bringing him onsite next week makes a lot of sense. And then potentially, you guys could reserve that second visit for when we did interviews, or if there was a need, you know, to bring him at another time, then we could pay the additional cost. So, my question to the council is, one, do you want the consultant to attend next week on May 2nd? And two, is the council okay with me essentially telling him that we'd like him to appear in person?
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, then Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, AJ, have you confirmed he's available?
Yeah.
So, we're not, we're not just doing that. Yeah, I, I think very much so. I would love to see him out here. And, and please communicate to him, we need him to come prepared to get the information he needs from us, not just wait for us to tell him. I've been pretty frustrated by what I perceive as a very passive approach at this point. And I want him to have a list of what he needs from us, and we will respond accordingly. So, please do bring him out. And I think that's a good, a good solution to get him out here. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney?
You kind of took a little bit of the words out of my mouth. I agree absolutely face to face. Yeah, I, if, he comes prepared. But in addition, what, give us, what he, he needs to give us what he needs from us. So, we're ready there. We don't have to think about, we, we've done some prethinking. Again, anything we can do to add efficiency to this process.
Councilmember Harris.
I will defer to my colleagues, but I disagree. I, I think we had technology problems, and we should fix them. But this is one thing where in, there's this little voice in the back of my head that says, we should keep those onsite visits in the back of our pocket later in the process. I don't know why, but I've worked with a bajillion organizations, and something's going to come up. And that will be like, where you really want to have that person to have that heart to heart. And I'm not sure this is it. This feels more rote to me, but I defer to my colleagues.
Councilmember Mahoney?
I'll, I'll counter that thought. I mean, we just talked about the fact that we want to have discussions about possible ways to cut timelines. I think there's going to be a lot of interactive conversation. I think it's a good point for us. And, and then we've got our other one in the kitty for the later time as we figure out that, we're going to know so much more about maybe what the corners will get cut and so forth with the second one. And quite honestly, you just said it, you know, nobody's ever complained when you took time to hire the right person. You know, I don't want to add cost. I'm not intending to. But, but if it's worth the third visit because it's the right thing to do, then it's the right thing to do. We're, we're essentially, I think, establishing our leadership for the next, I'll say, five to 10 years. And let's get it right.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Just for information, you said it added an additional cost. Do we have any idea what the additional cost would be?
I do. I knew someone was going to ask. So, additional onsite visits by the recruiter above, over and above the two are billed at a professional, it's $1,000 per day. And then we'd have to cover the meals and mileage. So, it'd be $1,000 flat rate, and then it would be a per diem, and then the IRIS mileage reimbursement rate, which, I apologize, I don't remember.
But from Montana, that's not going to be a one-day trip, right?
Should be. When I mentioned to him potentially that I was going to float the idea to the council about coming on May 2nd, he didn't give me any, any, any indication that he wouldn't be able to accomplish what he needs to do in one day. Now, I guess maybe one question back to him would be, depending on how you guys dis, design the actual interview process, if it was one day or two days, and you wanted him here for both of the days, that would potentially be an additional cost. The other thing the council could do is just lean on city sta, the HR team with other city staff to help with the recruitment. Because we're, we can do, we're perfectly capable of managing some of that for the council.
Well, it's a little bit hard for me to believe that he's going to get back to Montana after a council meeting. So, it kind of makes me think he's going to stay overnight. And then do we pay for his trip?
No.
For him?
No, no, I'm sorry. So, the, the first two visits, all, anything that would, that's covered already in our fee, right? So, travel expenses, hotel. I, I don't think we get itemized lists, but whatever it is, it's already covered. So, we, we wouldn't get any additional billing for that visit on May 2nd. What it does is that it reduces the times that we could bring him back onsite without being billed an additional amount. Sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Okay. Okay, I understand. So, any, I do have some comments, but I want to let anybody else. So, I'm a little bit ambivalent based on some of the, you know, our experience so far. If he doesn't come prepared, and he's not ready for a robust conversation or interaction, he doesn't prepare us ahead of time for what he'd like from us, then even if we keep him, it's hard to, it's hard to call that one of our times. If it, because you did just say that after tonight, this is going to be kind of an autopilot process. You're handing the reins over, and it should be freegoing after this. But then he's going to come two days after that. So, I'm a little bit, if, if a few of our council members are still disappointed, and let's say we request, have a request, is that going to be count, you know, I suppose that's part of a negotiation that we can go through. But, I mean, I'm, I'm feeling a little tension up here, so that's why I'm like, a little bit ambivalent about super strong if he's not.
I guess, I just, if I can just respond to the autopi, no, it's not going to be on autopilot. I guess what I was saying is that we'll be sort of in a holding pattern a little bit because we'll have to allow sort of some of the processes to play out. But that doesn't mean that the council stops doing work. So, here, a couple scenarios. We could bring the consult, whether it comes in person or through Zoom, whatever. So, let's say he comes on May 2nd, we say, hey, we have this proposed timeline that came out from our HR. What can we do to shave time off of that? So, we get that established.
Okay.
Then we go through potentially, and you say, okay, I want to talk a little about, what, what are these written questionnaires? Are those, is that information that we need to provide you? I mean, so there's things that we could discuss, or you guys could discuss with the consultant about the recruitment in general to get more of the plan laid out. So, it doesn't necessarily, so I just want to say, it's not autopilot. We just probably won't be as much in the details, and it will pick back up, right, once you guys get the, the applicant materials. So.
Understood. And either, Councilmember Harris?
So, I got it. This is a question, Mayor. Are you expressing a lack of confidence in SGR?
I am perceiving a lack of confidence. I had some pretty pointed questions in my personal interview, and he satisfied that. I'll, I'll just share, one was that if we, if we want him to do some focused personal outreach and actually ask him to either personally call somebody or personally write either specific people or a specific group of people in Western Washington or King County or something like that, he will do that. And to me, that answered this, this personal attention quandary that I had. And so, if we ask him, I want you to reach out to these five people. And if we all have five different people, he will do that. So, I don't feel as insecure about his service as possibly a couple other people. So, that's what I'm proceeding.
Yeah, no, well, you're not hearing that from me. And I have to assume that a highly paid professional that we've hired comes fully prepared until, I mean, that's, that's it. So, I wouldn't even take his preparation, you know, as anything to even consider. I assume he's going to come guns blazing to do whatever, you know. I only said about having the meetings for completely. But no, I, I assume, you know, everybody, you know, the council chose him in their wisdom, and, and he's going to do the job. So, that, that, does that make sense?
Yes, it does. It does. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz?
I'm probably the biggest voice that I know of, about just being totally unimpressed with this individual. And it's not with SGR necessarily. It's this particular consultant that they have assigned to us. And as far as I'm concerned, the last two interactions I've had with him, he was totally unprepared. He certainly didn't come in guns blazing. You know, he kind of tiptoed, didn't, didn't have anything in particular. And, and that's where my frustration is. So, that's why I made the point, tell him to come prepared. Make sure he understands there's an expectation. And if he doesn't, we'll deal with it at that, at that point. But, you know, that's, I'm very frustrated with him.
Okay, thank you. So, the question is, will any, are there any other questions about this? So, your question is, do we want him to come in person to the May study session?
Yeah, may I, may I respond just one comment, please?
Absolutely.
And I hesitate because I, I don't know this individual. I've never worked with them, so I'm just making some assumptions. But typically, when we've interacted before with, and here and other places with executive recruiters, the mantra is guide, not decide. And so, I think one of the things that would be good on May 2nd is when you say, come prepared, you know, he potentially may be reading that as, I am prepared to take down your wants and wishes and dreams and desires and turn that into a successful recruitment. And what I think I'm hearing the council saying is, we want him to come in sort of with the plan and allow you, whether, a framework, maybe that's a better word, and allow the council to use the framework to base some of their decisions off of, as the people that don't normally recruit. And if that is an accurate assessment of what I'm hearing, then that's the direction I can give him. Because I think if I tell him, come prepared, he's going to say, about what? And, and so, I think if, if that's really an accurate assessment of what the council's saying, that's what I'll tell him. We, please come in with a framework or an eye, you know, using your knowledge. What is a successful recruitment? Where have you seen things that have been sort of lessons learned? And to bring that knowledge to you guys and let you guys pick it apart until we come up with our own plan.
Okay. So, your question is, do we want him to come in person on May 2nd, have this interaction with us? Or do we want to keep that in our pocket? Is that a good synopsis?
Yeah. And if you keep it in your pocket, then I guess the secondary question is, do you want him to attend period? And it could just be virtually.
Well, my opinion is that didn't work very well last time, and I haven't heard any upgrade, about any upgrades. So, I'm just throwing that out.
I will say that when I talked to the IT director, they figured out what was causing the feedback. So, I think that they have a solution to show a little grace to the IT department. You know, it's almost like live TV. And so, you know, they, just so you guys are aware, they had practiced before and everything went smooth. But, as my understanding when I talked to IT Director Dale, that they figured out what was causing the feedback. And they think that, that we'd be able to avoid that in the future.
Okay, cool. So, I'm going to, without any further questions, I'm going to put it out. And this is kind of a hand raise, head nod. Who would like him to come in person on May 2nd to have a conversation? That's four of us. So, that looks like a tie, a close majority there. Okay?
Okay, well, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next item up on the agenda is the property tax levy lid lift. And the purpose of this item is to consider draft ordinance 24-020 concerning a levy lid lift in August. Also, inside of this item is a consideration of draft ordinance 24-028 in support of a possible ballot measure in November. I'm handing it over to Finance Director Jeff Friend. Thank you.
There we go. Good evening. This is the third reading for the property tax levy lid lift. The recommendation, as we've stated previously at the last two readings, is for a permanent levy lid lift, a single year with a levy rate of $1.40 for the August election. To explain, a single-year permanent levy lid lift is when you have, the first year of the increase, you can increase the, the property tax levy more than the 1% limit, and it would not expire. Meaning, it's not a temporary increase in property tax that would expire in two or three years. But that single year would always serve as the basis for the property tax levy going forward. Impact on property tax revenue, the 2023 property tax levy was $5.5 million with a levy rate of about a little over 89 cents. This ballot measure would raise that to $1.40, which would have increased that same levy by a little over $3 million to 8.665 million. These are the proposed uses. So, the excess, the additional property tax levy revenue would have the, the purpose of retaining and adding patrol officers. I mean, for public safety. Sorry, I'm going to take a breath. There we go. Okay, so, we're going to read, the purpose would be to retain two police officers for, we would price that out to about $430,000. The average patrol officer costs the city $215,000 between salary, benefits, equipment, and training. The city would like to ask the public through this ballot measure to also re, make permanent some positions that were ARPA-funded, such as two patrol officers that were funded by the ARPA grant, a crisis response specialist funded by the ARPA grant, and then we also have a limited-term crime analyst. So, that would retain our current- So that would retain our current levels of public safety service. But we'd also want to add four police officers, a code enforcement officer, contribute to our score jail costs that would result from increased public safety and law enforcement, add court staff to also handle that additional workload, and then leave a little something for police vehicles that need to be replaced. So the total amount of proposed uses would be about $2.8 million in total. One of the questions has come up, has concern, has been concerned with, how do we know? If the voters approve this ballot measure, how do they know that they're getting what they pay for? So how would we account for the proceeds? There would be two ways. One way would be with a special revenue fund. So the city has different types of funds. And one type is special revenues where the revenue is dedicated for a specific purpose. So we can calculate how much money would have been a result of the increase in property tax levy and that can go into a special revenue fund. Then the special revenue fund can reimburse the general fund for the costs of the additional officers and the retainage of the other law enforcement personnel. Exemptions. So as some of us remember, the King County assessor was here to discuss the exemption program for seniors and disabled. So the state law provides a tax benefit program for senior citizens, persons with disabilities, and disabled veterans. Under the exemption program, the value of a residence is frozen for property tax purposes and you become exempt from all excess and special levies and possible regular levies, resulting in a reduction of your property taxes. So qualifications, our annual household income should be less than $84,000. Own and occupy property is principal residence for over six months per year. And are over the age of 61, disabled or a veteran with at least 80% total VA disability rating. One of the promises the assessor made to us was that his office would calculate what the impact would be of that program on our property tax levy. It's probably much less than anyone anticipated. The King County Office, Assessor's Office estimates the impact of the levy lid lift to be $29,790. I can explain that after, if you have a question about why that's so low. But it does relate to the amount of assessed value that is categorized as exempt for the program. The history of the property tax rate in Des Moines going back over the last decade. In 2015, the rate was actually a dollar, a little over $1.65. The assessed value in thousands, so this would be in billions, was almost 2.7 billion. And as you look through time from 2015 down especially to 2023, you can see every year the assessed value increases. Now, the fact that you can only collect 1%, or I'm sorry, increase 1% of your property tax levy per year, you can see that that rate does not keep up with the increase of the assessed value. So as the assessed value in the middle column increases over that span of nine years, you can see the rate drops. So there's an inverse relationship. So the rate drops from $1.65 in 2015 down to 85 cents per thousand of assessed value in 2023. And then 2024 is actually the first time where it, the assessed value actually decreases a little bit, resulting in a slight increase in the property tax rate to a little over 89 cents. Impact to the property taxpayer. So this is a comparison of the current 2024 property tax rate for the City of Des Moines to the proposed $1.40 rate based on the same assessed value for 2024. So if you have a property value is $400,000, you would see an increase of $202 per year in property taxes. If your property value was $1 million, your property tax increase would be $506. And if it was 1.6 million was your property value, then the increase in property taxes for you annually would be $809. Your median property value in the City of Des Moines is around $521,000. So to look at a property tax bill, since we're talking about the impact to the taxpayer, this is the current 2024 levy. And you can see there are many various taxing authorities. The City of Des Moines is the fifth largest. Those are listed by percent of the total property tax. And so the City of Des Moines is 7.69%. You can see the whole pie over there is the orange section. So that's the whole property tax pie. And the levy amount again is just 89 cents. The total levy for this person or in this sample, the total property tax they were paying would be $11.63 when you add up all the different taxing authorities, like the school districts, the fire district, Sound Transit. So if we were to raise that rate to $1.40 and every, all the other taxing authorities remain the same, you can see the orange slice of the pie grows a bit. The City of Des Moines goes from the fifth to fourth. It is 11.54% of the total property tax bill in this example. And of course, the total property tax per thousand of assessed value goes up 50 cents to $12.13. This brings us to the motion. If I can answer any questions?
So do I have any questions before we take a motion? Councilmember Mahoney?
Yeah. Could we go back to the slide of the proposed uses of dollars? There. So I want to talk about the ARPA money because we, of the subsidies we provided in the gap over the last three years. So the $430,000 and the $135,000. But we also funded score jails, I believe, around $250,000.
That's correct.
And then we did some court money as well.
Yeah, about $550,000 of ARPA.
So a good majority of this, maybe 40, even 50% of this has been subsidized for the last three years and we have it charged with taxpayers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's what I had there.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah. In terms of accounting for the proceeds, you know, how does, how does the public know we're going to spend it on what, we're saying we're going to spend it on essentially? Even if we put it into a special fund, that fund still has to remain in balance. And if something happened that the revenue fell below the commitment that we've made to employ the officers, we'd have to borrow that money from somewhere else in the budget in order to make that fund balance. Isn't that correct?
Well, your first part of the question I would, about how would they know? That would be through our financial reporting of what we would be spending it on and which would make, having a special revenue fund, it'd be easier to make that more transparent. As far as if there was a gap in funding between staffing needs, if it was to go, if those revenues went directly into the general fund, which they can, and then they fell short of those staffing needs, you'd still have the same gap and it would be absorbed in the general fund. It might be more difficult for the public to see that because you have, you know, parks and finance and IT and HR, all those other departments in the general fund. If the revenue was in the special revenue fund, let's say the revenue was $1 million and the staffing that it was supposed to fund was $1 million.5, well, you'd spend down that $1 million and you'd stop, you know, at zero. You're not going to have, send more cash over than you have. And then you still have to address the same issue through the budget process. Are you going to cut or are, or are you going to transfer something else or raise revenue in a different way? So that's, the revenue covering the expenditure, that's the main issue, regardless of where the revenue is coming in, in as far as what fund.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nutty?
For the special revenue fund, would you be coming back to council with an ordinance to direct staff to create that fund?
Yes.
Would that be next meeting or?
Yeah, we'll, we'll start putting that together. It's pretty simple. And we have a, we have probably a dozen special revenue funds already. So we can put that together prob, maybe at the May 9th meeting.
Thank you.
So added onto that, does it, will it have to have an if clause? If the levy passes, then we, I mean, it's, I don't want to project, you know, any bad vibes about that because I'm in support, but if it doesn't, have we created an unnecessary ordinance? If we do it ahead of time, if you're not going to have that revenue?
Possibly. I mean, if, the levy would be for the 2025, I mean, we'd receive it in 2025. And so we could, as part of the budget process, it will, when we know what's happening, if it does pass, then we can create an ordinance and then have that fund available in the 2025, '26 budget.
If you need direction from council to bring that back, do you, when, when in this little agenda item, do you want to hear back from the council? Right now, after we vote on the motions? When is the most appropriate time to ask council for that? If they want to give you that direction?
For the special revenue fund?
To create, yeah. Councilmember Nutting just asked if we needed to create an ordinance for that and you said, yes, we can bring that back. And then Tim talked about doing that. So, but before we ask you to do that, we really need at least three council members to nod.
Yeah. I guess if you wanted to do that now.
Right now? So who would be in favor of asking staff to bring forward an ordinance that would create a special fund? Unless, does anybody have something they want to offer on the table in regard to that consideration?
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Aren't we still in, in, you know, question mode here? I mean, just strictly to this.
That's why I'm asking where would be the time? Okay.
It's your meeting.
There's, there's no motion been made right now. We're in the middle of discussion. So it's okay.
Well, not in the middle of discussion.
Excuse me. We're in the middle of questions.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
So we haven't opened the motion. Raise your hand if you would like the staff to bring back an ordinance in the future to create a special fund to put levy proceeds into for transparency purposes. Okay. It looks like six, six of us, plenty. All right. So any other questions to the Finance Director before we take a motion? Yes, sir. Councilmember Ofsker, sorry.
Yes. I am, I am somewhat confused on the additional officers that we're, we're talking about here. Are the, are the score jail costs, the court staff, and the public safety capital needs based on the number of positions we have? Not the number of people that are filling those positions? In other words, you know, we're, I've heard two presentations now on this and that we're striving for, I believe it is four officers and a supervisor per, per shift. Is that correct?
It would be one patrol officer per team. So.
Which there's four.
About a supervisory role, but there's four patrol teams and there would be adding one patrol officer in addition to what we have now to each team.
Okay. But are the, are the calculations for the, the jail costs, the court staff, and the public safety needs, are those, are those based on the number of positions we have or the number of people that we have available to fill those positions?
I, I think I can hopefully clarify this. The score jail costs are essentially based on our current usage. We, the, the price of score jail has gone up and, and we don't have enough money to pay for how much we currently use. And so we anticipate with more officers, we would likely have not a, not a big bump, but we would see potentially maybe one more person with the average daily population, which is how we get billed. So that may increase. So this would essentially help us cover our existing jail costs and any increase that would occur. But yeah, I will say right now that our jail costs are, are higher than we would like and, and probably more than we can afford. And then the court staff additionally would be addressing current needs and future needs. So we may see an increase with additional officers. But this would allow us to address our existing needs, which we probably can't address at the moment with our current budget, as well as future needs. So I don't think it's tied to a specific number of officers. It, a lot of it is, is what the current costs are right now. That would allow us to continue to provide court services and, and pay the jail costs.
Okay. But I've heard that if you're adding more officers, it's going to increase the court cost.
That's correct.
Okay. But if you're not adding positions, you're just adding the number of people that are covering those positions? Because right now, we've got, in order to meet staffing, we've got people working overtime. That's not an additional police officer. I mean, that's not, that shouldn't be an additional cost. It's still the, it's still how much one person is, is.
If we put a five to, a five and one instead of four?
Yeah, that's what, I believe that's what Jeff just said, that we'd be adding an officer to every shift. Is that the question?
So we, we would be going five and one instead of four and one? So the goal is five and one?
Yeah, I think that's the first time I've heard that.
Okay.
I've heard, but the, what I was hearing before was that, is that having to make the shifts in order to cover our formula, that we were having to pull from other sources and sometimes go, go, you know, just lacking a position.
Okay. Do you, do you feel good about it now? You feel like you've got the information you need?
Can I ask the, the Chief of Police if that's, if that's what I was hearing in the previous conversation?
Come on up, Chief. Sure. Sounds like it.
Thank you. Good evening. Tim Gaetle, Chief of Police on behalf of the department. Thank you, sir. Right now, our staffing model calls for one supervisor and four officers on each shift. There are four main districts that we cover. So we deploy officers across the city to address calls for service, community caretaking, and proactive activities. I currently try to calculate what's called a patrol relief factor to ensure that when staff are out due to leave, training, et cetera, that we can still run day-to-day operations without negatively impacting the staff. When we have vacancies in patrol, which is our main body that responds to calls for service and 911, we will pull people from specialty positions or not fill those specialty positions to make sure we can meet that. Based on the formulas we use, our patrol relief factor is about 1.3 or 1.4, meaning that if you want one officer in a district, in a neighborhood responding, you really need 1.4 times that. So the goal for me would be to have an officer and, excuse me, a sergeant and five officers on each squad so that our patrol relief factor matches the service expectations of the community. Did I answer your question, sir?
That, that, thank you for the clarification.
So indeed, when I look at that chart and see add four patrol officers, that would add to, as we're staffing now. So currently in the patrol division, we have 20 officers. If you're to multiply that by 1.4, that comes out to 28. So in a perfect world for the current service expectations of the community, we would want to staff our patrol division with 28 officers. This gets us in, to 24, which is a step in the right direction.
Good. Is that clear for you, Councilmember?
Okay. You said, I'm sorry.
All right.
You.
Take your time.
Okay. You said 20, okay, you're, you're at 20. This takes us to 24. You'd prefer to be at 28.
In a perfect world, yes.
Okay. This does not get us to 28?
No. It does not fully provide for a perfect world scenario according to our patrol relief factors. But it's in within the budget expectations of what the levy. relief factors, but it's in within the budget expectations of what the levy would generate.
Okay. I need to mull on this, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any further questions before we take a motion? Okay, may I have a motion, please, or do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to adopt draft ordinance number 24-020 to place a ballot measure for property tax levy lid lift on the ballot for the August primary election.
Do I have a second, second for, with Deputy Mayor Steinmetz? Any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
With your indulgence, I have a statement. During this process, I said that we all seemed to want this, but for different reasons, and it sounded like a good thing to say at first, but the more I thought about it, the more I started to think that it was one of the stupider things I've said recently. For some context, I proposed this, like literally, my first day in office, and I fully acknowledge that in the broad strokes, it's the right policy. We needed more officers then, we need them now. In fact, we haven't been fully staffed, basically, in, during any year that I've lived here, okay? But we would call ourselves fully staffed, and, but, as you've heard by the department's own definition, we haven't, you know? And if you tell people that you're fully staffed, they will rightly complain when the expectations you've helped create go unmet. So, there's that communication piece that people just, you know, rail about, and the lack of coherent message tonight. There was a better presentation to the Citizens Advisory Committee yesterday, and it should never be the case that the Citizens Advisory Committee gets that kind of detailed briefing before the council. I also wanted a Finance Committee from day one, and partly, again, to manage expectations, because the fact is, we've also used one-time money to pay for salaries basically every year since I've lived here. And even though we created a policy forbidding it 10 years ago, including ARPA, some of us sincerely disagree with all these concerns. For them, this lid lift is simply a necessary response to the unforeseeable. Well, if this is all really unforeseeable, of course, my concerns are not valid, and there's no need to change the way we do business. So, I concluded that why we each want this really matters, because it's tough to properly message something if you don't even agree on the message, and I think you've heard a bit of that here tonight. Well, here's my message, the voters don't owe us this money, and I think we've forgotten that. Even with the right policy, it's our job to convince and do so with complete humility, and thus, this should have been fully baked with a coherent, all-hands-on-deck message after the second meeting with the Finance Committee. I really hope this process would be a bold step in that direction in terms of communication, transparency, and public safety. But it's been five meetings, we've run out of time, and I think you can hear that my concerns, which seemed as reasonable to me in 2019 as now, are not addressed, because I was here for the last lid lift, and it did not go to plan even then. As it reads today, this feels as tone deaf and patronizing as last year's bond vote. And I really want to support this, but sadly, until we have the proper guardrails and messaging in place, my vote will be no. And nothing pains me more, but at some point, we must have fiscal discipline. I know that the public considers public safety their highest priority, but under state law, my highest priority must be fiscal discipline. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Mahoney.
Couple things that people need to realize, as I asked Mr. Friend here earlier, for the last three years, we, maintaining, the items we maintain, some of the vehicles we purchased, we were subsidizing so, some of what this levy is going to cover. It's been true over the last couple of years, COVID's had a dramatic effect, costs went up 6% and 13%, so we're going to save over the last couple of years at least 20, and our revenue has not been close. This is a reality we're all facing. We've been bombarded by taxes, the McCleary decision dramatically raised people's taxes in their houses and so forth, and I don't want to do it, but we have been one of the ones not holding people to raising taxes. We've been trying to keep the line, we've been doing things we can, we've been creative to try to help our public safety piece. Another thing that's happened is our state lawmakers created policy that has increased crime, and it's been problematic, and everybody's seeing the results. We need more coverage, whether it's going to reduce crime or not, it might in this city, it might deter it, and that's what we really need. We've been understaffed, and we need to support our police. This doesn't have anything to do with capital projects, I want to make that clear. Capital projects are an investment in your future, so the waterfront, redondo, those kind of things, that's going to ensure and solidify us fiscally and for the betterment of the community. But this is the thing here, that, that's, that's I'm trying to drive home, is people will need to understand that with these components now, we have to choose whether we want to, that public safety is an issue. Fiscally responsible, I think we have been, I disagree with Councilmember Harris on that. It's a difficult time, nobody's ever seen an increase like this in our lifetime of this kind of inflation. Maybe you saw it in the Great Depression or something like that, but I'm not seeing anybody around here that, that was during that time. And so, it's, it's, it's important that we remember that. Now, here's a couple of things that I want to talk about. We're going to do an August one, and I know we'll do a motion for November, but this is about this August one. I want to talk about what happens if a levy like this fails. So, and Chief, you can, you can, you can agree with me or disagree with me when I say these, but I met with a few people, and we talked about what would happen if the levy failed. Reduction of police officers, so we talked about the three, the four we're maintaining plus the addition. The slower, it'll be slower police response due to reduced number of police officers. Reduction of police officer safety, where there's fewer going to, like a domestic violence requires two officers to go at a minimum, right? It's the crime analytics that we're using, that's eliminated. The homeless outreach program, where we're trying to find an alternate source in this new world with drug epidemics and so forth, that goes away, and we've actually helped people with this in a different, creative way. We're thinking of things differently, but it costs money to do it. There's also the reduction in court services, so slower time, probably dismissal of things. But there's a couple of other things, we're probably going to lose police officers, because we're not showing them that we support them to protect us. They're the ones out in the middle of the night, they're the ones that, when you need them the most, and you call, they're there. People forget it, they see things that they can't unsee, and they have one of the toughest jobs in the world. The other thing, and if we, if we don't pass it in August, people will see it in the budget, they're also going to see reductions to parks and recreation, they're going to see public works, so that program your kids went to in the summer, well, we can't simply afford it, because we have to balance our budget. Or, you want your street fixed, well, we don't have the resources to do it. These are the realities here that are going to happen. We've looked at the options, yes, a new city manager will come in, and they're going to look at items and costs and efficiencies in their staff, and that's up to them. But the thing is, is I don't think they're going to glean a lot, we might get a couple hundred thousand dollars out of the deal, but we're talking about $3 million a year. It's necessary to move to the thing. The problem is, our property taxes are capped, as I said before, sales and use taxes, we don't have the car dealerships, the big box stores, we, we even, you know, one of the reasons why I was pushing for a hotel downtown, it was like an additional revenue source, economic generators, so we don't have to rely on the taxpayers, and we need to seriously look at that to float the boats in the future. Other cities are different than us, I know there's been comparisons, and there will always be, but in this particular case, we don't have those as revenue source, we got a three-legged stool. Property tax is capped, sales and use tax that hasn't grown what we'd hoped to after COVID came out, and utility taxes, which has been a third leg that was controversial and added, but what it did is help us weather the, weather the storm of COVID. But the fact is, we have to ensure the safety of our residents, and this has to pass, and people need to change their thinking. So, what we've done here is this is, this isn't arrogant or anything that, we're going, look, this is the real situation, and here it is, and voters, you decide if public safety is important, and you decide if you don't want that, you decide that you've made the choice that we're going to have to reduce services, because we're required to balance the budget. And that's, that's what it really comes down to, so I'm going to support this, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, I, I do want to talk a little bit about, you know, fiscal responsibility, because if you want more of something, and universally, we have heard people want more public safety, comes up almost every conversation, you have to pay for it somehow. And, you know, in this case, we have a plan on how to pay for that. There will still be parts of the budget process that we're going through when we try to get from 24 possibly to 28. Who knows if we can get there? But the fact is that everybody I've spoken to wants more officers, and that simply is going to cost money. And as much as we'd like to, you know, get on our high horses and say we've been talking about this for years, although I've never heard it, you know, the fact remains, this is where we're at now, and this is the plan to pay for increased law enforcement. And, you know, there's always a little bit of a bow wave, and, and the jail costs and the court costs that go along with that, that has to be covered, the equipment costs of having officers, and this is going to help get us there. So, it really is pretty simple, if you want more officers on the street, if you want a higher level of public safety in Des Moines, then support the levy lid lift in August, and, you know, that will allow the city to provide that level of service. And it's a pretty straightforward thing to. There have been a lot of changes that have happened in the last few years, some of which have been seen coming, a lot of which haven't. Nobody would have predicted the level of inflation that we've had, the things that Councilmember Mahoney just talked about. Fact is that we're trying our best to make all the pieces meet to provide the citizens of Des Moines with the service levels that they want. We are hearing over and over again, more public safety, and that's exactly where we're at, and this is the way to get there, and you've seen the layout from Mr. Friend as to what the costs are, how this money would be used, you know, in response to the more public safety, that's why we funded a couple officers through the ARPA funds, knowing we'd have to figure out how to get there later. But who expected the level of inflation to eat up so much of the general fund revenue that we have now? This is going to be a dedicated fund, you're going to be able to see it, it's going to be very transparent, it's going to be spent on police officers. Don't let the gosh we could've, should've, would've back then interfere with your support for saying, okay, I want more public safety, I want to feel safer in my home, because this is the way to do it, and this is the only way we can get there, and if we don't do that, then a lot of other services, including law enforcement, are going to have to be cut, and that won't be pleasant for anybody up here. So, I'm going to support this, I think it's the right way to go, and I hope that everybody else on the council will as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris, second time.
The council voted for a lid lift in 2006, it was a five-year temporary lid lift. In fact, it was sponsored by the person on the current con committee. And the notion then was that it was temporary, because, you know, there were blue skies coming just down the road with all the economic development. The fact is, police, and there was a dedicated account set up in the GL, and the fact is, as expected, staffing went up dramatically the first year, and then it went down again, like, and it was actually lower than when it started. And it was simply the case, and me as a Marina guy, I saw the city taking money out to pay other bills, just as they did transfers out of the Marina to plug various budget gaps. And so, although I dearly want public safety, I have never seen this city not have an ad hoc approach to budgeting and messaging, and I will just say that what changed my mind is that if you look at like how the schools or the fire service handles levies, they sell like a boss, they show you the benefit statement, they start doing mailers, they don't take your vote for granted, they sell it, and that respects the customer, or rather the voter. It says that it just gives you confidence, you know, that they respect you, and we're essentially making this up as we go along, and I actually, you know, agree with all of the material reasons why one should vote for it, we do need more public safety, but I have become convinced just in the past few days, in my interactions with the city, and that we are taking budgeting for granted, that we'll simply grab more money and never do, never do the scrub that so many others have talked about. And if you don't do that, you'll never get to the Communications Director and any of the other stuff. And so, it may be painful, but somehow, enough already. And if we gotta, you know, have some tough discussions this fall, fine, but we have to learn to manage expectations and stop constantly looking for, yeah, it's just, it's just a management thing to me, and, you know, that's it.
I just wanted to add, I just wanted to respond to that, I'll tell you that the city, I mean, we're scrubbing the budget, we're looking at everything, we're looking at every department, and we're looking at ways as we work towards next year, and through the budget process that's going to start soon, we're looking at everything that we can do, okay? This is one piece, this is not going to rectify the current budget issues that essentially every city is going through right now, that it's not, it's not specific to Des Moines. And right now, what we're asking the council to do is to approve the lid lift to go on the ballot. When we're talking about selling, one, we can't sell this, it's against the law, but two, we don't even have it approved yet for us to consider what steps would be taken, like the mailer, we're not going to prepare that prior to having approval to go on the ballot. So, yes, there are steps that will be taken between now and August, but prior to any of those being taken, we need to know that the council wants to put it on the ballot. So, that's where we're at now, and then we'll proceed to the next steps.
Thank you. Councilmember Oxger.
I think part of the problem that's, that, the concerns that I'm hearing are that, excuse me a minute. The concerns I'm hearing are that our immediate knee-jerk reaction is to say, okay, we've got to go to the voters and have them cover this, you know, deficit, rather than first, some people have described it as scrubbing the. Rather than first, some people have described it as scrubbing the budget, but really taking a hard look at what we're doing and seeing how much of this, you know, can be, can be done internally or coming up with some other alternative to raising taxes. I think that, that putting this on the November ballot rather than the August ballot would give us the time to not campaign for this, but at least show that we understand that, you know, the public has some real concerns about how we've been operating, the lack of communication. And it is somewhat, whether it's intended, and we can all swear to God that there's absolutely no way this is intended, but think of the optics of the fact that also on the, on the budget tonight, or on the agenda tonight is, if this should fail in August, whether we mean it this way or not, it's basically telling the public, we don't care what you thought, we're going to keep giving, we're going to give this to you again until you get it the way we see it. So there's a bit of contempt, you know, for, you know, the public's, the public's response. Like I say, I have no problem putting this on the November ballot, which gives us the time to show that we're hearing what the public is saying. But I've got, it's giving me real heartburn to, to couple this with the idea of, yeah, it's got to go, it's got to be a quick rush to put it on the, the August ballot, and it really doesn't matter what you think anyway, it'll go, it's going to be on the November ballot if you turn it down. So a lot of this is optics. You know, I've run five of these campaigns, and it's all optics. And right now, I don't particularly like the optics. Thank you.
Any other discussion points?
Okay, well, a couple of observations, a lot of thoughts and responses have already been spoken from me. One, one other, a couple other thoughts are, it's not just regional messaging in regard to our public safety, it's national. And I think our goal, we do have lateral transfers that do come from inside the region, but what are we doing? Just, we're not really increasing the safety of our region by bringing people into it if we're just trading officers back and forth between cities. So when you're considering securing the interest and pleasure of, of law enforcement in other regions or across the country, we need a strong message, especially across the country, for a suburb, a Seattle metro city. And so I think this sends a strong message to the country that we, we are wanting officers that will have respect, be desired and honored inside of our community and appreciated. And this, this does that. I know that's not necessarily a budget consideration, but we have heard, there is, there is desire for this and appreciation for this amongst some of the, some of my colleagues. It's more of just a, maybe there's a, a feeling we're not going about it in the way that may appreciate most, but the paradigm they believe in, more officers they believe in, the levy they believe in. And I just want to say, the timeline, we got to the, I'm appreciating the work of the Finance Committee. I believe in the Finance Committee. I fought for the Finance Committee for the purposes of transparency and, and extra people just digging into the budget. I believe they're going to do more good work, and I believe there's going to be reports out and accountability to the community. I trust this committee. I'm looking forward to hearing more out of it. I just, I think it's very important for this community to send this message to the region and to the country for securing more safety for our community. So moving forward, if no other comments, I think it's time to take a vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. Looks like Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, and myself are pro. Not in favor of this motion. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and Councilmember Harris. So it passes four, three. There is a second component to this item on the agenda. It's a second motion, and if you would, yes. So moving on to a secondary presentation from Finance Director Jeff Friend. Thank you.
Okay, I'm following up on the topic of the timing of the elections. I'm just going to go ahead here. So the August primary election is August 6th, 2024. The filing deadline is next Friday for that election to get a ballot measure on is May 3rd. The rationale for the August primary election was its place in the budget process, we would at least be informed of whether the voters had approved or rejected the ballot measure, and we could budget accordingly. And also, the rationale was, the message could get through to the voters more clearly in August as there's less competition for their attention than there would be in the November general election, during the presidential election, and everything else that goes along with that. Also, this, the idea of following up a failed ballot measure again in November was actually, I think it was the example of the South King Rescue Fire, is they, there's the idea of, or the practice, which we're doing a little differently, of in case it fails in your ordinance, you can enable your taxing authority to put a ballot measure on, you know, in case of failure. We have to do it with, if that's desired by the city, we would have to do it with a separate ordinance because you can see under the November general election, that's November 5th, the filing deadline is August 6th, which is the election day for the August primary election. So therefore, if the council agrees to put another ballot measure on in case of failure in August, we would have to do a second ordinance and do it separately, do it bef, we would have to do it before August 6th, before we know the result of the August election. However, the ordinance includes language that we can pull that ballot measure if the original measure passes in August. And so that would bring us to the next motion.
Thank you. Any questions before we take the motion? Okay, do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to adopt draft ordinance number 24-028 to place a ballot measure for property tax levy lid lift on the ballot for the November general election.
Do I have a second? Okay. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz for the second. Thank you. All right, any discussion? Councilmember Harris.
I agree that the optics are terrible, but I would slightly disagree with my colleague in that there was nothing rushed about this. We've had five meetings about it, and the original ordinance did not improve substantially after the second Finance Committee meeting. So there's been nothing rushed about it. And when I use the term selling, I'm sorry if that sounds crude, I'm a systems guy, and by that, I mean, you, you come to the meeting, we talked about being prepared. That means having the full package, you know? Everything that people need should be right here, and everything that all seven of us need to feel like, yeah, you bet, this should have been unanimous. And the fact that my colleagues are not, were not even clear on the benefit statement should tell people that this was simply not ready for prime time. And the discipline, when I talk about the budget, it's having, discipline also means that you have your entire product rollout ready to go, okay? And the product was not ready to go. And so if it wasn't ready for the August thing, it, you know, I don't see what a few more months in the easy bake oven will do to improve it, but okay.
Councilmember Mahoney and the Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
So you saw the timing on this. I believe it, and I believe we should pass it in August. We'll hardly do. But there are dissenters, and those, for whatever reasons, valid or not. The problem is that we have a huge election that will be nothing short of a circus in November. And unfortunately, the fear is, a lot of our messaging will get lost in that. August is typically the time that like a fire levy or something like this or a school levy is done because it can be handled as an isolated issue. Yes, if, if it, for some reason, and God forbid it does be, fail, then when we go through the budget process in October, it'll be really clear to those of us paying attention that we should have passed it in August, and we should have planned it that way. But it's a, it's a stopgap. It's a safe move because of the fact that we, we can't, that the timing, we don't even know the results before we have to file. Now, we can pull it, but it's an insurance because personally, why I'm going to support this, is I believe in this levy so much that it has to be passed, whether it's in August, which I'm very hopeful and optimistic it will. But in November, I think it'll be clear when people, when we're going through the budget process, we talk about what we're losing, it may be clear. But our problem is, and everybody knows it, we're having a presidential election, we're having senators, we're having governor, all these open positions. It is not going to be on the forefront like it is in August. And that's why we chose August, and it is ready. It is ready for the messaging. And it sets us up, and it makes us attractive as we hire a new city manager that we show his support. And it also shows us that we support our police, and that what I'm hearing from all the residents I talk to, public safety is the number one issue, and we are addressing it. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Thank you. I mean, the second ordinance is a backup plan. It's as simple as that. And people up here have talked about the importance of always having that backup plan. Well, this is it. All the arguments that apply to passing it in August would apply in, in November. But the timing of such on the budget is, we want to have, know whether this revenue stream is going to be in place for law enforcement in August so that we can write the budget accordingly. If it does not, then we'll write the budget on that, and maybe we'll get it, people to hear that message in November, but there is going to be an incredible amount of noise. And you're just not going to have a real good conversation about a levy lid lift in Des Moines at that point. But you got to have a backup plan because otherwise, there's just going to be a lot of cuts that nobody wants. And that's why it's a smart idea to put it on in August. And this is following an example from South King Fire Rescue, has done the same with their levies in the past. Several other, I think, school districts have done it in the past. This is not an unusual thing to try to pass it in August at the primary when there's a lot less noise and you can focus more on a particular issue. So I'm going to support this, and I think it's just a good idea to do this.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Harris, for your second time.
I tried, and, you know, I'm open to correction, but I could not find examples of this strategy of having it on the ballot twice. And South King Fire, because they do sell properly, their, their levies pass like mothers love. So, you know, it's not, they don't have the issue. And the backup plan, just FYI, our peer cities are already having budget workshops for the fall, okay? In April, May, they're preparing. And one of the things that I wanted to see was a, yeah, I wanted to see, you know, some sort of, you know, template balance sheet that says, okay, here's what happens if it doesn't pass. Here's, at least, we're starting to think about it. Other cities plan year round. And I'm just, I, I want more public safety, but I do want that financial system to be cleaned up. And this is just, and by the way, you know, we've had so many recessions here, I don't think people remember 2008. I'm just struck, this is not anywhere near the worst financial situation since I've lived here. We go through them all the time, and we should start acting like that. So, thanks.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Talk about bad optics. Some people up here are advocating sacrificing your public safety to try to get to their version of financial responsibility. And that's as simple as it is. That's what's being advocated, and that's really unfortunate because you deserve public safety. Thank you.
Any other question? Okay, I guess my comment is that if it's, first, you don't succeed, try, try again. And if you do succeed later, it's because something changed. And so if, if this were to happen, and we're having a backup plan because the second time, I'm, I'm not really afraid of asking people for things a second time. It's still just a vote, and it's private, and they, people can just put it, fill in a little circle a second time if they don't want to do it. But if it changes, let's say we take the scenario of it's unfair to ask the voters for something twice, well, if it changes, that means somebody changed their mind, and they actually do want it, and/or other people are filling out their ballot that didn't fill out their ballot the first time. So it doesn't, it's not scary to me or disingenuous to me to ask people a second time, any, anything. I know from some of these people up here, they've said, you know, the legislature, their, their tagline is, you gotta, you gotta go through how many, four or five sessions to get a bill passed. They just keep asking. It's the same with the port. If you want money from the port, you just got to keep asking. Go to your commissioners, ask them again and again. If you, if you want something, it's okay to keep asking. People still have their private opinion. Nobody's going to take pictures and put people's ballot out on Facebook unless they do it themselves. So it's okay to ask people twice for something. It's, it's not a, it's not an offense. So, but I really do think it's going to pass the first time, and I agree with everything that's said about the need for public safety and the messages this, this brings. And I think we've got some very strong cohesive messaging that has come across the dice tonight. So I appreciate that. All right, let's take it to a vote. We've had the motion, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Same for, so Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, Councilmember Nutting, Councilmember Mahoney, and myself in favor, all opposed. Councilmember Oxiger, Councilmember Grace Matsui, and Councilmember Harris opposed. Motion passes four, three. Okay.
While, while she's getting that set up, I just wanted to mention, we found out the owner of that Gatorade.
Oh, I owe money to somebody.
And actually, it's a council member that's no longer on the council, and that's been back there for a while.
See you later.
I guess I would just say, thank you, Mayor, for helping us clean out an item that has been in the fridge for a long time.
Gosh, I'm going to be in bed all day tomorrow. I'm looking for the expiration date. I probably shouldn't. I might have to call 911, and I'll be thankful for public safety, okay? So. Yeah, there you go. Oh, thank you for the lightheartedness here. Okay, well, we're on to new business. And the first item in here, on this section here, is our levy lid lift committees. And this is in partnership with preparing for this. So the purpose of this item is to consider the appointment. So the purpose of this item is to consider the appointments to the committees which will write the pro and con statements for the public safety levy lid lift ballot measure, which will appear in the voter guide in the August primary. So we put out a lot about that. I think Jeff has the story. Take it away, Jeff.
Hey, um, let's see here, pro and con committees, they are required by state law. They consist of up to three members. They must be appointed no later than the resolution filing deadline, which for us is May 3rd, next Friday. And they must be individuals who are known to favor or oppose the ballot measure. And if no appointment is made, the county auditor will, whenever possible, make the appointments. The process the cities had, so far as the cities advertised these committees via city website, social media, citizen advisory committee and at council meetings, we've received three applications and all three are eligible for appointment. And that brings us to the motion.
All right, do we have any questions before I take a motion? Councilmember Grace Matsui.
So it says here that the deadline is May 3rd. Does that mean if someone else wants to serve on those committees, they still have time to put in an application or is this finalizing it right now?
Tim knows the deadline on that.
Well, we pretty much need to finalize it now because our pack, if it were to go back to the council next week, we'd have to have the packet done tomorrow. And so, yes, we're requesting that this be finalized now. But I will say, anyone can help the pro or con committee. So if we do get an application, we could refer them to the people on the committee and just say, if you reach out to them, you can assist.
Their name just won't be on the actual ballot.
That's correct.
On the pro con, but they can still volunteer.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great question. Any other questions? All right, do I have a motion? Councilmember Nutting.
I move to confirm the, the May oral appointments, excuse me, of Martha Hamilton, Bettina Carey to the pro committee and the appointment of Susan White to the con committee for the August 2024 public safety levy lid lift ballot proposition.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz has the second. Any discussion on this? Okay, call for a vote, all in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous, 7-0. Congratulations. I think only one of the appointees are here today. Thank you for stepping up. Okay. New agenda items for consideration. This is a time for the purpose of proposing new business items for discussion on a future agenda. That also have not been previously seen, been before the council, this is not a time for council action or questions about old business. Council members can submit questions or seek updates on previously discussed business to the city manager at any time. Do any council members have new business they would like to propose? Okay, well, that's good. That takes us to the next item is council member reports and we'll begin with Councilmember Oxiker.
In deference to the late hour, no report.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Friday is Arbor Day and I want, we don't have a program here, but in nearby cities they have free tree planting offers and I urge you to check them out because it's always great to plant a tree. And one other quick thing, since I attend a lot of other agency meetings, at Highline Schools, I saw something very interesting. Two new directors said, they said, I'm voting yes, but not now on a particular item. They said, it's simply not quite ready. And it was the most gentle but firm way to say, what's something I would say, it's not ready for primetime, but when it is, bring it back. And I was deeply impressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
Thank you, Mayor. I would say I'm in the retail business and sales are the truth and in our positions as elected officials, votes are the truth. Camera's working well. So I have something, I was texted and I don't normally look at texts, but it popped up on my watch. It was from a gentleman down in Redondo and I just wanted to read this to you. Camera's working well. We can watch it go off from where we sit and watch TV. Saw six cars in a row get a photograph taken. So obviously it's starting to impact people down in Redondo.
So they're, they're a day early, I guess.
Apparently. That's all I have, Mayor.
So, yeah, so I guess we're ahead of schedule.
Councilmember Grace Matsui.
Thank you. I wanted to just share that at the mayor's invitation, I attended the Seattle Southside Chamber of Commerce 24, 2024 Pacific Northwest Education Workforce Summit this morning. It's a good thing that they told us it started at 7:00 because I got there at like 7:15, but it really started at 7:30. So I was early and that was a trick that I should use in the future more often. But we had some great remarks from some of the sponsors, including Home Street Bank, our host, Mayor Ralph from the, the city of Kent, folks from the superintendent of public instruction, two folks from Highline School District and College. And really, I think one of the great parts about hearing what was impactful was hearing directly from some of the students who were there, who talked about their exposure to work experience as high school students, which really left me thinking that they have a lot of opportunities that weren't necessarily available and I hope that they broaden those opportunities to include more people in the future. It was also being held at the ShowWire Center during, right after our, our meeting was Career Fair, where they said there were like 1,200 students who were coming. And I'm sorry I couldn't stay a little bit longer because I was just leaving as the busloads of students were coming in and they had that, you know, shock look on their face of like, I have to plan for my future. Because that is an exciting time to talk to young people about what is coming up next for them. So I appreciate the opportunity. It was great to hear a little bit about what is the current state of education from civic leaders, education leaders and folks from commerce and the area of business. There's some things coming up this weekend. I, I don't know if Councilmember Mahoney would touch on it, but we have a, a rummage sale and plant sale happening at the North Hill Community Club tomorrow. And I can't remember the exact date, times that is. It's like noon to...
I, I can't recall either. I missed the last meeting, sorry.
That's all right, come by. The plant sale has been really successful. It's one of the things that we come, we, we actually make a lot of donations as a result of the sales, so please stop by and I think that is all. 10 to 3, thank you, thank you very much, Mayor. And I will pass it on. Thank you very much.
Before we pass it on, I would just like to offer to extend the meeting for about 10 minutes, like 10, or not, for about 12 minutes to 9, 10.
So moved?
Second.
Second, great. All in favor? Looks like it's unanimous. Did you get that first, first and second? Who's on first? Okay. So the meeting is officially extended for a few minutes. Go ahead, Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to piggyback on the proclamation we had for mental health, mental health awareness month. A 2020 study by the CDC found that 40% of US adults reported struggling with mental health and that 11% of US adults seriously considered suicide. So the long and the short of it is you're 2.5 times more likely to die by your own hand than in a car accident or in a homicide. More specifically, the construction industry has one of the highest rates of suicide at 53.3 per 100,000 US workers. This rate is four times greater than the national average and five times greater than that of all construction fatalities combined. So if anybody you know is struggling with mental illness or thoughts of committing suicide, as Mayor Buxton said, 988, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Or if you're not comfortable talking to somebody, there's also a line that you can text hello to 741-741. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Great information. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Let me just echo what Councilmember Nutting said. I, I agree. This is a, this is a real issue in the community that we're just starting to address appropriately and, and I'm glad to see that, you know, the council is doing the proclamation and raising the level of awareness about that. I sort of titled this what I did in the last few weeks. And so all 13 items, I'm, I'm going to go on as fast as I can. Last night, first and foremost, we had a great citizens advisory committee meeting. We discussed the levy lid lift, came up with a list of pros and cons. I would encourage the people who are on the pro and con committees to take a look at those lists when they're putting together their ballot pieces, the statements for the ballot. We also, the citizens advisory committee came up with three names for the alley behind the theater and those are being forwarded here and, and you'll see those at, on a future agenda. They also decided they wanted to keep meeting on a monthly basis and so we are going, the committee's going to meet in May and they're going to talk about, you know, the qual, the desirable qualities they want to see in a city manager so that we can incorporate that, you know, into our evaluation. And two, they want to take a look at the budget, at what our budget priority should be. So they're going to get a copy, or they already have a copy of the general fund for this year and kind of go through that and say, hey, these are important, maybe look at this. So that scrubbing process is going on constantly. I know the staff does it too, but now the citizens advisory committee is going to get involved in that. Yesterday, I attended the grand opening of Elena's Cafe with ribbon cutting. It was wonderful. Nice food that was there, great people that own and are running that. I would encourage everybody to go there, it's delicious. Candace's Vietnamese Kitchen also had their grand opening this last weekend. I was there and got a very nice meal with my wife. And I would encourage everybody. Candace's is the former TND Coffee House, which is the former Origins Vietnamese. It's good food. Their foe is some of the best around. So I would encourage people to also go there. I met with the city manager recruiter firm, did what was called a listening session that you heard about. I attended the Redondo Community Meeting. Chief Gately spoke and addressed some questions about the levy lid lift and there were other things happening. I am the liaison to the Des Moines, Destination Des Moines for the council and the Art and Wine Walk is really setting up nicely for May 11th. They're expecting between 300 and 400 people. They have approximately 10 different stores down Marine View Drive that are going to be participating, including the theater. Part of the theater is going to be open and they will have some music, wine and art in, in that. Encourage everybody to drop by, get your ticket. This is a, this is a really kind of fun casual event to just stroll up and down the street and stop in, have some wine, see some nice art. Way back at the beginning of the month, I attended the Public Issues Committee for Sound Cities Association and I don't have time to go into the details of that. Let's see, I met with the mayor and representatives from the King County Executive's Office. We had a good discussion about where Des Moines is at. The Executive's Office wanted to know and I think that was very productive and I know there's been some follow-up. Met with Chief Van Valkenburg, South King Fire and Rescue, and that's only nine. I still have four more to go.
I'll give you another 15 seconds, go for it.
I spoke with Rotary, I did the MIMS, MIMS training. Shannon Kirchberg would be very proud of me for getting that done and it was a great thing to do. Also met with several members of the community who have background in communications about what are the steps that we can take in the meantime before we can get somebody hired. And then lastly, I continued having committee in one-on-one meetings with several people in the community. And I am available and open with anybody that wants to sit down and talk and have coffee or something like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, as, as I hope you can see, your council's been very busy. I appreciate their work. All of them are working very hard. And we've all been involved in dozens of engagements with the community, with staff, working out, answering questions about the things that are coming up and the things that have been talked about today. So I appreciate the hard work of all of them here. I attended the Earth Day Celebration at Saltwater State Park. Great community gathering, babies all the way up to old people with canes. Fabulous educational experience, but lots of fun on a sunny day. As far as regional things, public safety, criminal justice, homelessness and housing and the new homeless in the form of asylum seekers, those are all the top, hot topics in the region and they're at almost all the tables that I, that I sit at. My advocacy, keeping Des Moines safe and making sure that we retain our authority to be able to run our city the way we think is going to be the healthiest and the safest for our citizens. That's what I bring to every table. Coming up, other than all the things that were mentioned here, be sure to check out Park Run. Every Saturday, it's a free 5K, rain or shine, run, walk, push a stroller, bring your dog. So I'm going to leave you with this and leave us with this, really. Coming together is a, is a beginning. Staying together is progress and working together is success. And I hope that you're seeing that your council is working hard to work together. Even when we disagree, I think it's really important to have not a straight vote across the board. I like it that we're a little bit unpredictable up here. It's a good transparency message out to the community. Nobody's pulling our strings. This includes our meeting, concludes our meeting for the evening. The next meeting date will be May 2nd, 6:00 PM, City Hall. It will be a study session. Please remember to pick up after yourself on your way out and Councilmember Oxiker. Would you like to make a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I move that we adjourn and I'll met you on bringing us in under the deadline.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Deputy Mayor Steinmetz, all in favor? All right, we have 7-0 on adjournment. Have a great evening.